There we go.
Good evening, calling this meeting to order at 4:03 PM. Good afternoon, this special meeting of the Napa Valley College Board of Trustees is now called to order. We welcome members of the public. Instructions on making public comment are posted in Item 1 on the agenda. We will ask at each item if there is public comment. Catherine, could you please do roll call?
Absolutely. Student trustee Soto Gonzalez.
Here.
And trustee Rios.
Here.
Thank you, trustee Deluna is not present yet.
Actually, I think she and Jeff both are in the attendees section. I see their names there.
Hold on, I see there are two people. Sorry, guys. And trustee Deluna, yeah, I told them if I happen to look that way.
It's the first time I've ever noticed that whole thing pop up, so I was like, hey, look.
Thank you for looking. Okay, so they should have.
We're all here now. Great.
Should have joined, so trustee Deluna is now present. And who else did, where are we? Trustee Baldini.
Here.
And trustee Iverson.
Here.
Thank you. Trustee Goff.
Here.
And trustee Baker.
I am here.
And Dodd is here as well.
Oh, I am so sorry, trustee Dodd.
We got it right.
Okay.
Okay. So we're all here, yay. All right, real quickly, I wanted to make a couple of comments before we move to adopt the agenda. I know there have been questions from our internal constituents, so I'd like to take a moment just to clarify the purpose and timing of this meeting. The board held two special meetings last week to meet with candidates for the interim superintendent position. And although we unanimously selected someone, there was not sufficient time for our regular meeting, before our regular meeting this evening to prepare contract for adoption. The Brown Act stipulates that the board is precluded from taking action on the compensation of a local agency executive at a special meeting. And since we need our interim to start January 10th, which is before our next regular meeting, we are taking time in tonight's meeting to make the appointment and the contract will be brought to our January 18th meeting retroactively for adoption. This is the same process we use to appoint acting superintendent President Oscar DeJaro. If you note the agenda items for the regular meeting later this evening, you will see that we are formally adopting the contract for Mr. DeJaro tonight, even though he has been in the position since November 15th. And similarly, we will be acting tonight to appoint an interim who will begin work prior to the formal adoption of the contract. So just kind of clarifying what we're up to tonight. And so do we have any changes to the agenda or we can adopt by consensus?
There are no changes.
All right then. At this time, the board will devote a total of up to 15 minutes to hear comments regarding closed session agenda items. Individual comments will be limited to three minutes. Are there any public comments this evening?
I have received none and I see no hands raised.
All right, and let me make sure I've got my right correct notes open. Okay, then. We then are going to be moving into closed session and we will, it should be back around 4:30, or 4:25 hopefully. And we have one item, conference with labor negotiator. And we will see you shortly. So I will see everyone else on the other Zoom link. Huh, okay. So let me get my screen back, there we go, okay.
You're at announcement of items from closed session.
All right, and then there were no announcements. How, so now we are moving on to 6.1. Do we have any public comment on the remaining item on our agenda, which is action to appoint interim superintendent?
Oops, hold on, I see a hand raised. And no, that is not this opportunity. I see John Tudor, he's going to make public comment in the public meeting. I mean, the regular meeting. So we'll take this action and move into the other meeting, thank you.
So closing public comment then. So now we have an action item and I would like to make a motion to appoint, hold on just a second, let me get my notes and everything so I have the right screen open. So sorry. To make a motion to appoint Dr. Robert Frost to the interim position for the period of January 10, 2022, through June 30, 2022, or until a permanent superintendent president is hired, whichever is sooner. Contract terms including compensation would be under negotiation or not established as an action and this is just action to appoint. So the contract will be brought back to the board for action in open session at the next regularly scheduled meeting of the board on January 18, 2022. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, so I have first and a second. Any discussion? Hey, we do not have any discussion, but I do have a couple of quick comments I'd like to make about it. If you'll recall, the original timeline for filling the superintendent president position had the board confirming an appointment for the permanent position today at this meeting. And as we began the process, it became clear from listening to our constituent leaders and representatives that we needed to slow down to allow for a thorough, thoughtful and inclusive process. And we really appreciate everyone's commitment to creating that process. It's one that supports our efforts to find the best possible president for Napa Valley College. As a result, though, that changed timeline. We realized that we needed to have an interim. So that we were not, it did not allow time, however, for us to really engage with the rest of the community to talk about how we wanted to bring in this interim. However, the work that we've done with the constituent leaders to identify characteristics and experience required desire for the permanent president, I believe very strongly has influenced and was really helpful, informed the process and provided guidance for the board in reviewing and selecting this interim candidate. So I know the entire board, just to let you know, last week we met with several candidates and unanimously selected Dr. Frost because of his skill set and experience, I believe is exactly what we need right now. I was personally very impressed with his fiscal knowledge and experience. He is aware of our current challenges, is prepared to address them. And he's also aware of the board's commitment to DEI values and participatory governance. So I believe under his leadership, we will make a lot of significant progress in these areas. And it will also enable us to have the time to continue the critical work of identifying a permanent superintendent. So if there are no other comments, then I will take a vote. So trustee Dodd, your vote.
Yes.
Trustee Goff.
Yes.
Trustee Deluna.
Yes.
Trustee Baldini.
Hi.
Trustee Rios.
Yes.
Trustee Iverson.
Yes.
And student trustee Soto Gonzalez.
Yes.
And then I believe that's everyone. I don't, I've lost my cheat sheet, but I think I got us all. And so I will vote yes as well. And so we have a superintendent to begin work on January 10th. Thank you. All right, so we are going to adjourn this meeting and then we will be going in directly to our regular meeting. We don't have to change Zooms or anything, we're just changing board docs.
Yes. So you're adjourning at 4:56?
4:56, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, let's just flip our meetings.
The less links, the better.
Right? I'm still trying to find the right notes now. Oh my goodness gracious. Okay, hold on. All right then, so, oh no, that's the special meeting again, dang it, hold on. Why can't I find the right one? Oh wait, no, 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 no. Here we go. All righty then. So we are now calling our regular meeting to order. Good afternoon, this meeting of the Napa Valley College Board of Trustees is now called to order at 4:57 PM. We welcome members of the public. Instructions on making public comment are posted in Item 1 on the agenda. We will ask at each item if there is public comment. And Catherine, can you please do roll call again?
Absolutely. Student trustee Soto Gonzalez.
Here.
Trustee Rios.
Here.
Trustee Deluna.
Here.
Trustee Baldini.
Here.
Trustee Iverson.
Here.
Trustee Goff.
Here.
Trustee Dodd.
Here.
And trustee Baker.
Here. And I found my cheat sheet, so I'm good for the rest of the meeting.
I was like, I have to do that for you.
And Catherine, can you please pull up the flag so we can do the pledge of allegiance? And I'm going to, as trustee Goff, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I knew you were going to do that. I always say it too fast. All right, and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right then, so we now have the adoption of the agenda. Unless there is anything that needs to be changed, we can adopt by consensus. So hearing no changes, we are adopting the agenda as presented. And now we are moving on to recognition, student ambassador recognition. Acting President DeJaro, please.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. And good evening, board members, good evening, public. It gives me great pleasure to introduce this particular recognition, which acknowledges two of our exceptional students that we've had working in our Welcome Center as student ambassadors. But I'd like to call Jolie St. Clair, our senior manager of Welcome Center and student engagement, to make the presentation. Jolie, please.
Thank you, Oscar. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen and esteemed members of the Napa Valley College Board of Trustees. My name is Jolie St. Clair, senior manager of the Welcome Center and Student Ambassador Program. I'm honored to be able to present these special awards of appreciation to NVC student ambassadors Aliyah Jones and Martine Seha Jr. As a central part of the institutional infrastructure, the Welcome Center serves as one of the most active hubs within the institution in providing assistance and support to students, while the face and backbone of its success is reflected through the peer-to-peer support that's provided by our student ambassadors. These two individuals are being recognized for their strong work ethic and commitment to providing excellent customer service, which has ensured the highest quality of peer services for students. Their daily interactions in serving a diverse student population have been noteworthy and reflects the high standards of Napa Valley College. Martine Seha Jr. has worked at the Welcome Center since 2018 and recently graduated from NVC with an AS degree in viticulture. In addition to working as a student ambassador, Martine plans to become a vineyard manager and has been able to gain valuable work experience by working part-time in the vineyards while going to school. His familiarity with college programs and various support services is a strong asset in providing information to those seeking assistance. When the institution was forced to move to online classes due to the COVID-19 pandemic, student affairs took on the daunting task of contacting every student for follow-up. Martine gladly provided his assistance by personally contacting over 300 students on behalf of the Welcome Center and Student Affairs. Thank you, Martine. Aliyah Jones has worked at the Welcome Center since 2019 and is a pre-health sciences major. In spring of 2020, the restrictions imposed by the COVID-19 virus forced us all to adjust protocols and practices for providing student-related services. This caused an ongoing progressive surge in dependency for direct assistance through the virtual in-person foot traffic, which significantly impacted the Welcome Center. One solution to addressing these mounting customer service needs was the establishment of a temporary information center, where students could receive limited in-person assistance. Aliyah was selected for the role of information booth attendant based on her office knowledge and exceptional customer service skills. Her willingness to go above and beyond was instrumental in enhancing the public impression of Napa Valley College and significantly helped to improve the delivery of services for our students. Therefore, on behalf of the NVC Welcome Center, please accept these special awards of appreciation in recognition of your dedicated service as student ambassadors from 2019 to 2021. You are to be applauded for your generous assistance and unwavering support to the students of Napa Valley College. And the value of your contributions directly supports the mandates of student success and support programs. Please accept our heartfelt thanks and gratitude for your invaluable support to the Welcome Center, the Student Ambassador Program and to Napa Valley College at large. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Jolie.
Sorry, so I was supposed to do the happy dance, but my guy's not dancing and uh, if I dance for you, I'm gonna have to charge, I'm sorry. But if you want to see me dance, you better throw some dollars out there. Okay, thank you, folks.
Thank you, thank you very much. Oh, and thank you to those students, thank you very much.
Dean Erickson wanted to say a couple of words, is that correct?
I did, I was prepared to say a few words just in honor of our incredible students. So if I may, it will not take very long, but I would love to be able to share. So good evening, board and members of the campus community. It is my honor to be here tonight to support the recognition of two very important student ambassadors, Aliyah Jones and Martine Seha Jr. The contributions of these two ambassadors are significant. In the time they have been ambassadors for the Welcome Center, they have served thousands of Napa Valley College students. They have helped them navigate the college processes through application and registration support, accessing accounts and wayfinding, just to name a few. And they have been with us through a very unusual and difficult time and have been steadfast support to our students. And I just want to echo and appreciate all the work that Jolie has done as well in her area to really help motivate and inspire our student ambassador program. So thank you for allowing me the couple of minutes to share that.
Thank you very much. All right then, so now we are moving on to recognition, acknowledging our retirees. So again, Mr. DeJaro.
Part two, thank you very much, once again. Now is my honor to be part of this acknowledgement of two model employees that we've had at Napa Valley College who are retiring. But I'd like to ask first Patty Morgan, our senior dean of AOPS, Financial Aid and Veteran Services, to introduce and to share a bit on Valerie Moore.
Good evening, board members and community members. Valerie, congratulations. My name is Patty Morgan, I'm the senior dean of Financial Aid, AOPS, Veteran Services and Trio Programs here at Napa Valley College. And I have known Valerie for more than 30 years. She began her career at Napa Valley College actually when she started attending as a student. She came in as an accounting major and one of her faculty members asked her to tutor. And that started her career because she started as a student worker at Napa Valley College. Because we couldn't give her 20 hours a week at tutoring, we hired her in the Financial Aid AOPS office. And her excellence, her thirst for knowledge, her amazing mind, just brought to light so many of her skills and her excellent contributions to Napa Valley College. She was hired as a part-time hourly and then later as, in 1995, as the secretary three, which is now our executive assistant, administrative assistant to the dean of financial aid. And from that point, Valerie became the person to go to. She soaks up knowledge like a sponge or like a flower with sunshine and just becomes brilliant in her endeavors. She literally has, many of the spreadsheets that we use today were developed by Valerie. Some of our travel forms and some of the spreadsheets that our accounting department was using for so many years, Valerie developed those because she has this amazing ability to sort through all the stuff and the minutia, to find the simplest route to the best solution for any endeavor that she takes over, which is why she is so good at what she does. She is our go-to person because she has so much knowledge and she can recall that knowledge in a moment. So there's something that I'm trying to remember and I say, hey Val, and she knows exactly what I'm asking for and she can pull it out of her hat from years ago and it just absolutely amazes me. She is dedicated to our student services and to our student success. And she is there to help students in so many ways. She works in the financial aid office to help, to do the scholarship program, actually. She is our coordinator. She works with our Napa Valley College Foundation to make sure that our scholarship program runs smoothly and that students receive funds to help them with their education. And as a financial aid AOPS analyst, she literally maintains all of our budgets and makes sure that we know from every moment, from every aspect, what money that we have to spend, how we're going to spend it and maintains those for all of our programs, which we have many in our department. Her knowledge and expertise has helped us to administer more than $10 to $12 million of assist financial aid and other types of assistance over the years. And we've gone even as high as 14 to 15 million in some of our better times. And Valerie has been instrumental in making sure that all of our Ts are crossed, our Is are dotted and all of our numbers are exact and are reporting on time. And that is so critical in what we do. But more than that, she is a wonderful friend. She is a dedicated member of the classified professionals and was the president of the union. She has helped numerous departments and colleagues on campus and in the California Community College community. She has represented us through the chancellor's office with many of our programs and has been the face of Napa Valley College over the years. Her dedication, her knowledge, her skills, and yes, her quick wit. And not to forget, her puppy raising endeavors, which has brought comfort and joy to so many of us on campus and has brought to the forefront of the needs of our disabled students. And her willingness to educate others on the plight of our blind students and what are her puppy raising abilities and her puppy raising adventures are doing to assist the community at large. Valerie has even gone so far as to puppy sit for many of our students who are also puppy raising, who can't take their puppies to class. So as the senior puppy raiser on campus, she has helped out so many other students. And I have enjoyed so much over the years. Her ability to just stop and talk to students on campus and talk to her colleagues on campus and to watch presidents stop her and ask if they could pet her puppy and have conversations with her about so many things over the years. I'm sorry, I'm tearing up. She has been such an exceptional and instrumental person on campus to open the eyes of so many people and bring community service and joy to so many people and so many students that I am going to miss her greatly. I know so many of you who have worked with her will miss her. I thank you, Valerie, for all of your dedication, for all that you have done over the years for Napa Valley College, for the Financial Aid AOPS office, for our students, for our community. You are amazing and I wish you so much luck in your future endeavors and your next chapter in life. Thank you.
So Valerie, will she say a few words? Valerie, are you there in the audience? No? Okay, well, let me see the Valley, so.
Now Val's here, can you, Val, can you unmute?
She's trying to.
Okay, great.
Yes, Oscar, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Please, a few words.
Now I'm gonna cry. It has been my great pleasure and honor to be a part of Napa Valley College for 30 years, starting as a student. And you are truly my family and I will miss you dearly. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Val.
Thank you very much, Valerie. And now I'd like to ask Dr. Sarah Parker, our assistant superintendent, vice president for Academic Affairs, to please introduce Vicky Tevlin.
Hi, good evening, everybody. One of the first people who reached out to me when I started at Napa Valley College was Eric Shear. And he did so because he wanted to tell me that I was going to be working in the best office on campus. And I think that Vicky Tevlin is really the heart of that office. She's the glue, she was the person that throughout the pandemic was on campus every single day, five days a week. She worked as the administrative assistant in the Office of Academic Affairs. She worked for the college for 15 years. I haven't known her for that amount of time as Patty has known Valerie. And so I'm not able to speak to those full 15 years in the same level of knowledge. But I do want to share with you some of the things that people celebrated when we congratulated Vicky on Tuesday. And I will say that that celebration was hard to end because nobody wanted to leave. They had so much to say. First and foremost, people talked about her unwavering commitment to students and how she would just light up when students would call or walk into the office. And at that celebration, I shared that one of the last things that Vicky did for the campus was as a part of our degrees when due project, she called close to 100 students personally from the Office of Academic Affairs. She connected with many of them, some of them had gone on to get degrees other places, some of them were doing other things, some of them she left messages. She was able to connect four of them with our counseling department and those four students are now re-enrolled for spring semester at Napa Valley College. And I know that her warm conversations with them had much to do with it. People talked about her always calm demeanor, no matter what was happening on campus or in the office. Vicky was and is always calm, always happy to see you, always wanting to be helpful and a mentor to administrative assistants across the campus. Specifically, people talked about her incredible follow-up and follow-through, something that I think we can all aspire to. People talked about her love of hummingbirds and they were throughout the office, so I am going to miss them and maybe we need to start our own collection. And people talked about, again, just that friendly welcoming face every single time you called, every single time you walked into the office and spending time at that front counter, leaning over, chatting with Vicky, thinking about students and thinking about how to make the campus a better place, which was something she was so passionate about. So she will be incredibly missed by our office. I encourage you to read the resolution because they think it really captures her spirit and the contributions that she made to the college. We will miss you, Vicky.
Thank you, Parker. So Vicky, are you in the audience, would you say a few words?
I would love to say a few words. Thank you, Sarah, for those very kind words. I, you know, my initial plan was to work at NVC longer, but things kind of happen and as things change in our life, we have to make that shift accordingly. And so I had to make that shift of moving out of California, so I had to leave NVC. I will say that my time at NBC was one of the best jobs that I've ever had. And I've worked in a lot of different industries, medical, legal. I was a mortgage broker at one time, but I never really had that fulfillment of what I was doing was making a difference. And so, so many times, students would come into the office and be so, so upset. And sometimes they just need somebody to talk to. And I'm sure all of you have experienced that as well. I'm really, truly gonna miss working at the college. I'm, I, it hasn't hit me yet that I'm leaving. I think it's probably gonna take me a couple of weeks before, you know, it finally dawns on me. But thank you, everyone. I've enjoyed working with all of you. I will really, really miss NBC. And congratulations to you, Valerie. I know we've been talking about this for a while, about retirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicky. Thank you very much and good luck.
Thank you, Oscar.
Madam Chair, I believe that the resolutions that need to be adopted or approved?
We do have that. And yeah, I'm gonna get to that really quickly though. I just, I know it's always tough when people who have been with us for such a long time move on to their next phase, especially when we can, when we use words like glue to describe them. But I know that the excellent work that Vicky and Valerie have both done over the years has really put us in a good position to move forward without them. So, and I fully support the curation of a hummingbird collection as long as we could also have a puppy collection. So, and so I do have a couple of resolutions. I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but I am just gonna go over some of the highlights, some of which has already said, been said. We got the one for Vicky. We've got, she's been with us for 15 years. During that time, she's consistently demonstrated genuine passion about her work and heartfelt consideration to others and practiced unparalleled professionalism. And I believe that we definitely felt that tonight. She, her presence is immensely missed by all upon her. We must deserve retirement with the knowledge that she now has more time for her cat, her family, and her new home. So we have kitty lovers and doggy lovers among us. And then for Valerie's, 26 years of service, 30 years with the college, demonstrated her dedication to student success, genuine passion for community service, commitment to lifelong learning and expert professionalism. Her strengths are her shrewd mind, desire for knowledge, keen attention to detail, resourcefulness, teamwork skills, communication skills, and compassionate personality. And I know that we will definitely miss having the puppies at the board meetings when we do get to come back in person. I think maybe we should make it a requirement that there always be a puppy at board meetings. I think that will make life a lot easier for us. So can I get a motion to adopt these resolutions, please? So I heard Inez first and Michael second. So trustee Dodd, your vote?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
Trustee Baldini?
Aye.
Trustee Deluna?
Aye, with great thanks.
And trustee Rios?
Aye.
Student trustee Soto Gonzalez?
Aye, and thanks to them both.
Thanks. And then I will also vote in the affirmative. So thank you both ladies for your many, many years of service. And I hope you enjoy a much, much deserved break. So thank you very much. Moving on now, let's see, where are we? Okay, we are at public comment on closed session items. So at this time, the board will devote a total of up to 15 minutes to hear comments regarding closed session agenda items. Individual comments will be limited to three minutes. Do we have any public comment on our closed session items?
I have not received any and I do not see any hands raised.
All right then. So our closed session items will be, we have two items, 5.1 and 5.2, both of which are public employment. And then we have 5.3, which is conference with labor negotiators. And we will see you all back here hopefully around 5:45, 6 o'clock at the latest. Thank you very much. We'll see you on the flip. We are returning to public session. It is 5:58 PM. During closed session, the board took action to approve the following academic administrator temporary assignment for Tyler Downey, acting dean, DSPS and testing. Contract start date is July 1st, 2021. Contract end date is January 31st, 2022, which is an extension of one month from December 31st. And step placement is range 18, step B on the administrative confidential salary schedule. Special conditions of this assignment are that both parties understand and agree Tyler Downey is able to assume this temporary position due to his request for leave of absence from his tenured faculty position. All parties understand and agree Tyler Downey will return to his regular faculty assignment at the end of this assignment. No other items from public session or from closed session. So now we do have 7.1, which is a public employment consideration to enter into appointment agreement. So prior to considering this matter as required by Government Code Section 54953(c)(3) and providing an oral summary of the recommendation regarding the salary and fringe benefits under the proposed contract. This is for academic administrator. The district is entering into an employment agreement with Oscar DeHaro as acting superintendent president beginning November 15th, 2021 and ending January 7th, 2022. The acting superintendent president will receive a monthly salary of $19,215, which will be prorated for any partial, for any partial month of service. The acting superintendent president shall be entitled to receive the same fringe benefits as the administrative confidential employee group. Do I have a motion to approve this agreement?
So move, Baldini?
Second, Inez.
Second, I heard a first from Baldini, second from Deluna. Any discussion? Hearing none. Trustee Dodd, your vote?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
Trustee Baldini?
Aye.
Trustee Deluna?
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
Trust, student trustee Soto Gonzalez?
Aye.
Did I say Iverson?
You did.
I did, okay, sorry. And then I think it's everybody, so that's me. I am also voting in the affirmative. So we have a unanimous approval of that agreement. And thank you again to Mr. DeHaro for stepping into this role. We quite literally could not be doing it without you. So, all right. So now we're moving on into public comment. This is for general items. Public comment, is a public oppor, bah. This public comment opportunity is governed by the State of California Brown Act. By definition, this is an opportunity to hear concerns, perspectives, and differing vantage points. The board is not able, under the Brown Act, to engage in any level of conversation or discussion, but we look forward to this opportunity to gather community input. At this time, the Board of Trustees will devote up to 15 minutes to review comment to the Board of Trustees regarding any subject not appearing as an agenda item for this meeting, but over which the board has jurisdiction. The public may request that the board place an item related to the business of the district on a future board agenda. No action or discussion will occur at this time on such items. Each comment shall last no longer than three minutes. And I do have an item that was sent to us prior to the meeting, so I'm going to read that one.
Trustee Baker, do you mind? We have a John Tudor who is waiting to make public comment.
Sure, absolutely, Mr. Tudor, go for it.
I will just give him the, and I enabled his microphone and he needs to unmute. And he provided the document.
Good evening, board members. John Tudor, registrar of voters. I'm here this evening as your manager of redistricting for the College Board of Trustees using the 2020 census data. If Ms. Kittle could run to the second page of that document, I would be happy that would happen. Let me just bring you up to date. There we are. You're right in the middle, Napa Valley College, the middle column. So we have created a tool for the public to use to draw maps for the college. That tool is called DistrictR. That's district with a small r at the end. And your redistricting page, which I want to, by the way, I want to thank Ms. Kittle and the whole team at the college for being so supportive of this process. You've done a super job with your PIO and your tech people. Your redistricting page is perfect and you have the link there so the public can find this tool to draw maps. We held a public workshop on November 16th with the Napa County Office of Education, which in the past has had pretty much the same trustee areas as the college. That's not required, but it makes it easier if that's the way both bodies decide to go. We had some public discussion at that workshop and following that workshop, I have created a map on their site, which is different than yours on DistrictR. And I will create the same map on the college site no later than this weekend. So the public will have a map to look at. Trustee Goff did have a chance to look at the map at the Board of Education site, which does need to split American Canyon because American Canyon has grown too big for a single trustee district. We tried to put all of the schools in American Canyon in a single district with some part of American Canyon in the other district. That map will be available on the college's DistrictR site, as I said, by this weekend for the public to look at and make their own submissions. They can also submit communities of interest. So at your meeting on Tuesday, January 18th, I will be doing a presentation with your consultant, who is also the county's consultant, Redistricting Partners, going over whatever maps have been submitted on the college site. And then the board will have an opportunity on January 18th to give us direction to bring you the final maps back on February 10th. And during that period, from January 18th to February 10th, the public can continue to suggest communities of interest and to submit draft maps on both the Board of Education site and on the college site. Unfortunately, I asked our consultant, you can't move maps from one site to the other. And since they've been coterminous, we'll hope that we can make sure that both bodies see all maps that are relevant if you decide to continue in the coterminous trustee areas. You're not quite coterminous in one part of trustee area four, where the college represents all of that portion of Napa County. But the Board of Education does not because the Fairfield-Susun Unified School District comes in to that portion of Napa County. And then in case the trustees were not aware, you do represent some people in the county of Sonoma, where the children attend the Calistoga Joint Unified School District. And those parents and voters vote for the trustee area seven, the member of both the Board of Education and the college. With that, I have hopefully not used my three minutes and I will be seeing you on the 18th. And I am always available between now and then for any questions, not just from the public, but from any of the trustees. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And do we have any other live public comment that we want to go ahead and do now? No others?
Sorry, no, I don't see any others.
All right then, I then will, give me just a moment. Make sure I get the right windows open. Okay, I do have, we had a public comment that was sent to us by Patty McCourt and she has requested that I read this into the record. So here we are. After learning that the chancellor's office will be sending in a fiscal crisis management team, FICMAT, and reading the district response to the areas of concern that the ACCJC has identified, it appears that NBC is finally moving in the right direction. It also seems that most of the financial problems can be addressed by simply reinstating the following longstanding policies and procedures that were already in place prior to the last five years. Planning priorities drive budget development. Sustainable budgets create, using, created using prior year actual revenue and expenditure data as well as projected salary and benefit costs based on current actuals as a guide. The cost of all negotiated salary and benefit increases computed and submitted to the Board of Trustees before approval. Ensure that expenditures will not exceed revenues. Department budgets maintained in colleague, and adhered to by budget center managers. Enforcement of proper coding of all revenue and expenditures as they occur. Constant revenue and adjustment of both restricted and unrestricted budgets and expenditures. Board of trustee approval of all major budget adjustments as well as chancellor's office reports as required by law. Enforcement of budget closing and reporting deadlines. Regarding position control, the district had a manual version in place because at the time, the colleague module was inadequate and was unable to provide accurate information. Human resources and payroll maintained filled positions and vacancy rosters. President's cabinet would review the vacancies and decide which positions would be filled in the coming budget year. I then created detailed worksheets computing the salary benefit and mandated costs of current positions and the vacancy that set would be filled. Those computations were then forwarded to the controller to be used in budget development. This system worked quite well, but if colleague has a new and improved version that can accomplish the same thing, that is wonderful news. Now that the college has a plan for moving forward with the assistance of the FICMAT and the ACCJC, I believe it is very important to contemplate why and how things got so far off track and for so long. Two years ago, I presented detailed information to the Board of Trustees outlining my concerns about the fiscal health of the college. I used the problems at Peralta College as an example of what could happen. And now Napa Valley College is in the same predicament. I have been raising concerns and asking questions through public comment and emails to the Board of Trustees for two years. I guess the trustees and everyone else sitting around that table, including faculty, classified staff, and administrators thought that it was someone else's job to worry about those issues or take any action. What is the current culture of the college that allowed this to happen? What changes or checks and balances can be implemented within the culture? If serious discussions around these issues do not occur, there is nothing to prevent the same thing from happening in the future. Blaming the fires, COVID, and staffing issues for incompetence and mismanagement is just plain wrong. It is also wrong for those who know better to turn a blind eye to what is going on and remain silent, either because it's the easy thing to do or because it somehow benefits them. Those at the top need to ensure that there is district-wide compliance with policies and procedures. And the Board of Trustees should use their critical thinking skills and refrain from using a rubber stamp. As the district chooses its new president and vice president of finance, I hope that character and integrity are heavily weighed, weighted factors during the selection process. I also hope that as Board of Trustees seats come up for reelection, that voters are thoughtful and cast their votes wisely. So hearing no other public comment then, we can close public comment. And now we're moving on to 9.1, which is reports. So, and I believe our first report is from Dr. Tahara. Just, just as a note, we normally do keep our, try to keep our reports at five minutes or less that Dr. Tahara did contact me ahead of time and request additional time since it is the end of the semester. So, Dr. Tahara, you have the floor.
Thank you. Ms. Kittle, if you would, please put the PowerPoint that I sent you. Thank you. And I just want to remind the board that we, the academic senate, according to ed code, is not bound by time restrictions in our reports to the board. Trustees, colleagues, community members, and students. Tonight, I want to acknowledge the sacred land where we work, live, learn, and build community. That has been a place where people have lived for over tens of thousands of years. The land in the Napa Valley is unceded land, is the unceded territory of the Patwin, Michoacan, Mitzututl, Mayakma, and Miwok people. We also, I also acknowledge that this land acknowledgement is insufficient. It does not do the harm that has been done and continues to be perpetuated now against indigenous people, our land, and our water. Tonight, I also wish to acknowledge the work that the Napa Valley College community has done to serve students. to serve students during these challenges, the challenges of the pandemic and a fiscal crisis. I appreciate and feel honored to be part of such a dedicated faculty. I also wish to just express my congratulations to Valerie Moll and Vicky Tevlin. Both of them are valued colleagues and I will miss them. I was the chair of Vicky's Hiring Committee when I was the Director of the Teaching and Learning Center. Back then, we were nicknamed the Dream Team and she came on board and just took all kinds of directions from a bunch of faculty who were innovators. And so I just, I just want to say that I'm going to miss both of them. And that they have modeled an integrity and respect for faculty that I find has been diminished in some ways. So I will really miss them. I wish to express my gratitude to my colleagues, Dr. Jim McGowan and Dr. Robin Warnall, for their leadership in helping us create the institutional self-evaluation report in preparation for our accreditation visit. Normally, this process strengthens the college, the college's collegiality and understanding of the complexities of our different roles. However, this time it was different. There was no mutually agreed upon accreditation process that had gone through the collegial consultation process. So, as Dr. Warnall explained during one of our meetings, we were building the plane while flying it, which segues into the concerns that the academic senate has charged me to share with you. And we are expecting that you will listen to our report as a way of gathering more perspectives around what is happening at the college. That's the purpose of these reports. The academic senate is concerned that in the attempt to address the issues that created this fiscal mess that we're in, we are reproducing the sum of the same behaviors and expecting a different outcome. The Academic Senate Policy Revision Task Force prepared 15 BPs and APs. Amongst them, an accreditation AP, a shared governance AP. And we all were stalled in the process at the Office of the President, as I shared, as I shared evidence of that in, back in February of this year, with the policy tracker that was created by the Academic Affairs Office. The APs mentioned are 10 plus 1, which means that since the Office of the President has stalled their ongoing process, their ongoing revision process is outlined in AP 2410 and the collegial consultation process, we are in violation of Title V. And I want you to understand, there are currently 15 counts of Title V violations. I wish to share three slides and Catherine, Ms. Kittle, I'm sorry. Can you go ahead and forward the slide? That was for the landing. Okay. You still write that? Thank you. I know that, I wanted to just share with you one of the resources that I was able to get from our state academic senate. So, there seemed to be a misunderstanding or a lack of understanding from the former president and his assistant about the role of the senate and as per law and regulations. And so this one in particular, I just wanted to, to say that as a local academic senate, we have a different charge than the other two senates by law. And so, and one of them is our relationship to the board, where I, as academic senate president, have direct, direct access to the Board of Trustees and can bring forward items to be placed on a board agenda without filtering it by administrators. And the voice of the faculty must be given primacy on 10 plus 1 academic and professional matters. And there the, there's, there is enough legal, that comes, I should say, it has the weight of law, regulations, and also accreditation. You proceed to the next slide, please. Now, that is not to say that we are to ignore our colleagues. And there are, you know, it, it, the ed code also guarantees the college constituent groups the right to participate effectively in discussions that may impact them. But the local administration and the local academic senate are obligated to hear and give due consideration to all the relevant voices. And we believe that through our transmittal process, everybody has an opportunity to chime in on board policies and administrative procedures. Next slide, please. However, local senates are not bound to accommodate or reach consensus with other constituencies regarding academic and professional matters and allowing equal voice to all constituent groups in college or district decision-making regarding issues that fall under academic and professional matters. And to do so would violate the spirit and the letter of the Title V regulations. And I'm sharing that with you because so often the contention at Council of Presidents was that somehow or other I was supposed to, as senate president, agree to only parts of, that only parts of policies were, were deemed to be 10 plus 1. And that is not the case. That is wrong. It is against the Title V regulations that, that govern us. I wish to commend President DeHarro for convening this afternoon a multi-constituent task force to draft AP 6200, the Budget Preparation Process, in January, to ensure it is revised and reviewed by the Planning and Budget Committee so that it can enter the flow of our process as delineated in AP 2410 and go before the academic senate for final approval as it moves to collegial consultation mutual agreement. This allows us to address the urgent fiscal matters and brings us into compliance with ed code, Title V accreditation standards, and most importantly, restores transparency and trust in the Napa Valley College budget process. I hope we can follow the, I hope that we can follow this process that is taking place during Dr. DeHarro's leadership when the interim president comes on board. And hopefully then, the Office of the President will allow the other drafts to go through the revision process and the collegial consultation process to bring us back into compliance with Title V and accreditation standards and ed code. I look forward to continue my work with the Board of Trustees to create a more transparent and effective policies and procedures and practices that reflect an understanding and commitment to comply with laws and regulations and that ensure we model a functional Napa Valley College community to effectively serve our students. I wish you all a safe and restful holiday season. This concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Tahara.
Thank you.
And next we have Administrative Confidential Senate Report, Mr. Harris.
Good evening, trustees, colleagues, and Napa Valley College community. It has been one month to the day. The campus community was widely informed of the placement of the college and enhanced monitoring by the ACCJC. Collectively, we were stunned, angered, and frustrated. Since November 10th, an acting president has been named. We formed a cross constituency team that crafted and submitted the campus response to the ACCJC. And as Dr. Tahara just noted, Acting President DeHarro put into place a task force to address issues that need to go before the Planning and Budget Committee. We have also been visited by FICMAT. And this evening have named an interim president who is scheduled to take the position on January 10th. All with a national holiday that had the campus closed for two days and simultaneously the normal activities of teaching and learning going on the campus to support our students. To say that the last month has been a whirlwind would be a significant understatement. Our campus community is a resilient community that has persevered through earthquakes, fire closures, air quality closures, and ongoing pandemic. And now into a transition of a president superintendent and a vice president assistant superintendent that was necessitated by specific actions and specific inactions. We must now act and reorganize both physically and philosophically due to self-inflicted wounds rather than natural disaster. In short, the campus is a strong, resilient, and resourceful organization laden with individuals who live, love, and breathe Napa Valley College and its mission to serve students. Currently throughout campus, emotions are raw and frustration is palpable. But with proper care, proper and careful attention to our tasks at hand, student success, and colleagues, we will overcome these challenges. As stated at last month's board meeting, I fully expect that we, as a campus, will emerge from this current situation a stronger campus. We will enact policy and procedure to create appropriate and transparent processes via broad-based cross constituency collaboration and collegial dialogue. We will enact and enforce appropriate financial controls to ensure fiscal viability. We will monitor our classrooms to ensure appropriate coverage. And we will continue to offer our students a memorable and high-quality education so they can succeed in whatever their goals may be. We have been through quite a bit and undoubtedly we have quite a bit more to endure. We have hard work in front of us and I'm positive that we will get it done. However, there will likely be pain along the way. But as a collective campus and by collectively working together, we will emerge better and stronger. The Administrative Senate membership extends to all. Our sincere best wishes for a peaceful, rejuvenating, and blessed holiday season. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And next we have the Associated Students of Napa Valley College Report. President Texan, are you with us?
He's not present tonight. He did send in his report and I was able to post it.
Fantastic. Hopefully everyone has opportunity to review that. So next we have Classified Association Report, Dixie Larson, President. I believe she's with us.
Sorry, I was on mute. I just wanted to take this moment to congratulate Vicky and Valerie, who are very dear friends to me. And it was so nice to see them honored. And I'm definitely going to miss them and so are most of the classifieds. But, you know, we're sad to see him go. Thank you. That's my report.
Thank you very much, Ms. Larson. All right, then next we have Classified Senate Report, Martin Schumaker. Is our president with us? Don't remember if I saw his name pop up.
I don't see him present.
All right, then. We have next then our Faculty Association Report, Ms. Kristi Iwamoto, President.
Hello, board. Can you hear me?
We can, thank you.
Thank you. And forgive me for not having my camera on. I was caught in what is a fairly unusual traffic issue on Highway 80 coming east. And so I, I actually just had to pull over to the side of the road and do my report. Hi, everyone. So what's going on? I don't know. What isn't going on, right? And right now, we are in ongoing negotiations. We are working on our COVID protocols for spring, as well as things that we are, items that we are hoping that the district will provide, such as extra sick days in the event of quarantine or hospitalization of faculty, more rapid tests. Recently, some of us have had to be in situations where we needed to be tested. And for some people, we're finding that the, depending on where you can get in and where you can get a test, some tests are rapid tests, which take a good 15 minutes and then you know whether you've tested positive or not. Well, other tests can take up to 48 to 72 hours. And so we're really hoping to get a good supply of rapid tests on campus and allow educators to be able to go back into the classroom as soon as they know they've tested negative or to quarantine as soon as possible in the event that they test positive. Other things that we'll be working on for spring are administrative evaluations. We'll be discussing our program coordinator system that we have set up. And otherwise, we are just rolling with it. And we just wanted to wish everybody a happy holidays, a restful and safe break. And I look forward to seeing all of you in the new year. And that's my report.
Thank you very much, Ms. Iwamoto, and drive safely. All right, so that is concluding our reports. I just very quickly would like to say, yeah, I would totally echo what Dean Harris said. It has been a whirlwind the last month plus. I, you know, having grown up in tornado alley, I would say it was even perhaps a tornado. So, but I also want to say that, you know, I, on behalf of myself, and I think I can speak for the rest of our trustees as well, that we are very much looking forward to moving forward. And with the support of our acting president, DeHarro, and interim president, Frost, we are definitely going to be doing a lot of hard work. And we will do whatever we can to support the work that you are doing as well. So, moving on then, so we have now our president and cabinet reports. So, President DeHarro.
Thank you very much. My, my report is short. It's, it's been posted. But basically, the, there's a couple items I just want to make note of. One, as, as you know, and as a campus notes, we completed with the, with the letter, with the response to the ACCJC. And we submitted it by the deadline, which is, which is something that we are very proud of. Secondly, as you're also aware, and I shared with the community, with the campus community, that we were visited by, by the FICMAT team on the 29th of November. And so we hosted them. They were here for, for a day or so. And, and they gave us thoughts and advice that we are taking very seriously. And we will, we'll proceed with, with making inroads in the situation that we find ourselves in. As I mentioned in my communication, they will be sending us a report, their summary, by, hopefully by the March Board meeting. The other, the activities I participated in, this past Monday, I participated in the, in the ADN nursing pitting ceremony. Thanks to Dean Harris and to the student club members there. Also, that, that this past Tuesday, I attended the Kwanzaa celebration that's sponsored by Omoja, by Omoja Staff and Students. And for those of you who may not be aware of what Kwanzaa means or what it signifies, it's, it's a celebration of African heritage, unity, and culture. The name Kwanzaa derives from the Swahili phrase, matunda ya kwanzaa, meaning first fruits. I also attended yesterday evening, afternoon, the meeting of the Napa Valley College Native Culture and Wine and Technology Foundation Board, Board of Directors meeting. And I am, I am scheduled, I'm hopeful that I can attend this Saturday's 113th of Police Academy graduation. And lastly, I am scheduled to attend for this coming Monday, the Class of 2021 Psychiatric Technician Pitting Ceremony. So that's my report. But now I'd like to call on some of the members that are noted here in terms of the reports. First, starting off with Jessica Thomason, to see if she's available to provide a foundation update. I don't know if she's in the audience because I can't see all participants.
I'm here. Hello.
Please share.
Good evening. Thank you, Oscar DeHarro. Thank you for having me tonight. I also wanted to recognize Vicky and Valerie Moll. Valerie has done quite a bit of work with the foundation, supporting our scholarship program. She's helped me quite a bit as I've transitioned into the new role. So I just wanted to, to thank them. I also wanted to thank those of you that came to our holiday party on Tuesday at the Performing Arts Center. It was definitely a good event and it was nice to see everyone gathered together. I can now go into my report. I believe Catherine, you had a document to share. So I've talked a little bit in my prior reports. The foundation in the fall and October went through a strategic planning process. As part of that, we did work with a graphic designer that helped us in identifying a new logo and a new brand for the foundation. You can scroll up to see the logo a little bit. And so what And so what we did is we took some of the traditional, you know, colors and did kind of an upgrade and modernized the current logo and used color, the Napa Valley being the color of the sky, the college being the hills, and the foundation being kind of the ground, the core, the foundation of the valley. And we also voted and approved on a three- to five-year strategic plan and a new mission and vision statement. Our vision is every Napa Valley College student has access to an exceptional, relevant, and affordable educational experience. This is the foundation links the caring power and resources of the community with every Napa Valley College student. The other subpoint, the foundation is vital to Napa Valley College as it provides the community with dynamic, equitable, and relevant educational opportunities. Our mission statement, vision statement is more aspirational. The mission statement is who we are and what we do as a foundation. The board voted on the mission statement to provide every Napa Valley College student with access to the resources they need for an exceptional educational experience. And this is through connecting students with the resources of the community, providing for them and empowering them to succeed. It's also engaging the Napa Valley community by cultivating relationships, leveraging partnerships, and harnessing generosity for Napa Valley College. We can go to the next page. There should be a next page. Okay. I also wanted to share with you three identified areas of focus and goals for the foundation in the next three to five years around leadership, programmatic goals, and financial viability, financial adaptability. The leadership goals are to strengthen and recruit board members, to have them engaged, committed, and mission-centered, and provide necessary resources, governance, and leadership for the foundation to thrive. It's also to recruit and retain skilled, mission-centered support staff who are passionate advocates of the foundation's mission and also the college. And it's also to empower the alumni community in support of the foundation's mission and vision. Financial adaptability goals are definitely a high priority, and it's to provide needed resources in support of the mission and vision of the foundation, and to establish effective and efficient operations that contribute to the long-term financial sustainability of the foundation. And our program delivery goals, we had to provide the right resources and facilities to deliver the highest-quality programs to students and the community. So if anyone would like to see more details of the strategic plan, there's obviously a lot more that goes into it, they can reach out to me directly. Tying in with our financial adaptability is our annual fund campaign, which we're doing right now, to close out the end of the year. And this is also going to be a campaign we do all throughout the year. We have a goal of $200,000 to raise this year, and this is a pamphlet that's going to be sent in the mail and via email. And it pretty much goes over and talks about our students, the college, the needs of our students, you know, the role of the foundation, and what we do to support students and the college, and then it shows different ways that you can make a gift. So this document will be sent out, and if you would like additional copies, please don't hesitate to reach out to me. And thank you for your time, and I encourage your support and sharing this piece with others.
Thank you, Jessica. Thank you very much. Now I'd like to call on Dr. Wornall and Dr. McGowan, please, for a report on accreditation, an update.
Go ahead, Robin.
I was just gonna say that Dr. McGowan won't be given it today.
So I have the accreditation update. Good evening, Board of Trustees and members of the campus community. This is our last Iser-related update and our last accreditation update this semester. So just a quick catch-up from since the last Board of Trustees meeting, last time I presented to you. We completed all of the forums. We had five in total, and I think the last week we did two in one week, on the 16th and the 18th of November, covering standard three, and the last one covering the Quality Focus Essay projects and the improvement plans, details of which we talked about last trustee meeting. Those meetings, I think, were quite, the forums were successful. They were attended by between 20 and 40 people each, and we received a lot of good feedback. We received some corrections of fact, and we, I think, generated some common understandings about where we need to go next semester as we embark on these improvement plans and the Quality Focus Essay projects. So all in all, a good and useful exercise. So where is the Iser? Well, we are at the end of the line, not quite ready to get off the train, but we are in view of the station, if you can pardon the metaphor. All of the Iser components are posted on the accreditation website. I believe they're all designated as final drafts for Board of Trustees to review. There's a couple of small sections that will go in the introduction to the Iser that haven't been posted yet. Those are data-driven assessments of service area and student achievement, pretty cut-and-dry stuff, but all of the responses to the standards that we've all been working on for the last year or more are all up. Over the last couple of weeks, we've been getting as many minor revisions to the standard responses as possible, tinkering with the evidence to make it as effective and clear as possible. And really, what Robin and I will be doing for the next five days or so is working, five or six days, working around the clock to get all of that evidence, the many, many hundreds of pieces of evidence, I think probably in total over 1,000 finalized and embedded and appropriately accessible to the reader of the document. So we intend on submitting the electronic copy of the Iser, plus all of the evidence to the ACCJC on time, December 15th, and then we anticipate posting the Iser for the public sometime in January, and that would include a link to the ACCJC's forum so that any member of the public reading the Iser can submit a third-party comment that would then be forwarded to our review team, provided it was relevant and substantiated. And we do anticipate, Robin and I do anticipate, putting together a Flex Day workshop for our spring semester Flex Day, just to kind of kick off the spring work for the accreditation-related work, but we have yet to really hammer out the details of that. And I thank my colleagues in the Professional Development Committee for being gracious and patient with us. Oh, I have some previews for you. Yeah, so the Iser, most of the Iser is now with the graphic designer facilitated by Holly's Office, the Office of Public Information, so thank you to those folks. That's the cover page and the title page, and that's what the Iser is going to look like in its final form, so they'll be able to, the readers will be able to link directly from the text to the evidence. So I just wanted to give you a preview of what it's going to look like. All right, so this is the beginning, as we've said before, of a multi-year process. We showed this slide last month, but I thought I'd bring it back just to kind of refresh the board and everyone in attendance about what's going to be happening in the very near future. In January, a pre-visit meeting that would be the chair and the vice chair of our team, the ACCJC team, visiting team, will be meeting with institutional leaders to prepare for the comprehensive visit that's coming up later in 2022. Dr. Catherine Webb, our liaison, will be providing a training to the campus community to kind of get us ready for the events of 2022. There will be some activity at the end of February involving a virtual meet-and-greet and a virtual open forum with the team that will be reviewing us, reviewing the Iser initially. That initial review takes place at the end of October. We get the core inquiries from the team in March, which would be the areas of focus that the team anticipates the comprehensive review really paying attention to. And that's in order to give us the next six months or so to implement the improvements that we've identified and also address the core inquiries that that initial review has provided to us. So there's a little flurry of activity in the next couple of months, and then we have a nice, long stretch as an institution to get our feet under us and prepare for the comprehensive review. The Focus Site Visit is in October. Be some exchanges in the fall between the institution, the institution, our college, and the ACCJC, and then January and February of 2023, so just a little over a year from now, will be all of the action related to our accreditation. So this is the last Iser update. I am going to be continuing on to serve as Accreditation Faculty Co-Chair in the spring, and I know that Robin and I have talked about occasionally coming before the board to give updates on the spring activities and processes. So you're not quite finished with me yet, but you might be finished with the Iser, at least for now, in a few minutes when it comes before you Action Item 10.4 for your approval. And on that note, I would invite any questions or comments or anything in like.
Any questions from anyone on the board?
I'm just gonna chime in, request trustee Baker, to let you know that we've been collecting signatures of Oscar, Jim, and myself as co-chairs, and the constituent group leaders, who are all the signatories for the certification that is within the first two pages of the report, and so it is awaiting your signature in the repeat office pending the board action under 10.4.
Yes. And I said, I asked Robin to please chime in with that information if I forgot, and I surely forgot, and thank you very much, Robin, for picking up.
It takes a team.
Thank you very much. I wanted to offer you, both of you, Dr. Wornall and Dr. McGowan, my personal appreciation for your workmanship. It's been a great pleasure and experience knowing that the process that we have is under control, knowing that you are very thorough, very meticulous with information that you require from us as a campus. And just as a vice president for student affairs, the work that you've done is phenomenal. And you know, Dr. McGowan, I understand that you're in this role because you were appointed by Dr. Holla, I believe, so, but I want to express my appreciation to all of you for the workmanship that you've done and for the workmanship you've done for Napa Valley College in particular. Thank you very much. Now the next.
Thank you very much. I was gonna say real quickly, my internet is super unstable, but yes, thank you very much, and I'm looking forward to signing that document. Go ahead, Oscar.
Thank you. And now the next, we have an update from former Student Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, Dr. Patricia Munzami.
Thank you. Ms. Kittel, the slides, please. Thank you very much. Good evening, NVC Board of Trustees, students, colleagues, and members of the community. I am pleased to provide you with an update on the activities of the DEI Office. In addition to conducting individual meetings with a cross-section of our campus community to hear from individuals about the successes and challenges of advancing diversity, equity, and inclusion at Napa Valley College, the Office of DEI has engaged in activities that address structure, institutionalization of DEI values, campus culture, education, communication, and outreach. These activities encompass the following broad areas of engagement. So the first of these is District Committee Work. During the first Equity and Inclusivity Committee meeting for this academic year, we discussed the name of the committee. Notably absent from the name of the committee was the term diversity. We discussed the historical rationale for the name and agreed that we should rename the committee to the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee, as this conforms with standard language in the field of DEI, is consistent with language used by the Chancellor's Office, makes visible the need and desire for attention to the benefits of diversity in people, culture, identities, and ideas on organizations, learning, and individual development, and recognizes that Napa Valley College is at a very different moment in its receptivity to the important work to be done in the arena of DEI than when the Equity and Inclusivity Committee was first formed. We established a work group of the DEI Committee to assess the committee's structure and to make recommendations to the DEI Committee. The work group recommended broadening committee membership to have equal representation from the Academic Senate, Administrative Senate, Classified Senate, and Associated Students of NVC, and to also include members whose professional responsibilities bring particular expertise that will serve as important resources to the committee. During the November DEI Committee meeting, the membership approved the recommendation of the work group for a revised structure of the committee and the role of committee members in communicating the concerns of their constituent groups to the DEI Committee and reporting back to their senators on the work of the DEI Committee. The committee also examined the role of the committee within the wider college governance structure, and we are continuing to study models at other California community colleges and how best practices can fit into our Napa Valley College governance structure. Next slide, please. Another area of focus has been institutionalizing DEI awareness and action. We have developed and brought before the board resolutions to recognize Latinx Heritage Month, Philippine X American History Month, and Native American Heritage Month. We will continue throughout the year to bring similar resolutions to recognize other important national periods of recognition and celebration for the diverse communities that enrich our society. Student Equity will be one of two project areas that have been identified for Napa Valley College's area of focus in the Quality Focus Essay for Accreditation. These activities will feed into the next Student Equity Plan for the college and include the following activities. Incorporating disaggregation of data into regular institutional reports. Identifying and implementing effective practices to increase retention and successful course completion rates. Expanding opportunities for institutional dialogue that lead, sorry, that yield recommendations for action. And assessing practices to identify structural barriers to equity. Next slide, please. Surveying Campus Culture. The best DEI work is data-driven, and to that end, it is important to establish what Napa Valley College is doing well and what could be improved to sustain an inclusive and equitable learning and working environment. The National Assessment of Collegiate Campus Climate Surveys, a research project operating out of the University of Southern California, will administer a survey to NVC students to assess their perceptions of campus climate. This survey will be administered in February of 2022, with data analysis expected to be submitted to us in the summer or early fall. Data from this survey will be examined in relation to the focus group surveys conducted by CEEL, and will inform the development of programs that respond to these findings. In addition to surveying students, I'm also interested in surveying faculty and staff with regard to their perceptions of campus climate. NACC is developing surveys for faculty and staff, and we may use their services to administer the survey and analyze the data for faculty and staff. I am planning for the survey to be conducted in fall of 2022. Next slide, please. My Office and the DEI Community, in collaboration with ASNBC, the Cultural Center, Mesa STEM, and the Casa Sayam Learning Community, have been developing programming that includes guest lectures, educational email communications, and opportunities for cultural immersion through music and visual culture. And this includes the beautiful Zoom backgrounds created by the Office of Public Affairs and Communication that include artistic renderings from the ethnic communities we have celebrated thus far this academic year. As we move to more on-campus operations, there will be increased opportunities for cultural engagement that enriches our campus and forges stronger bonds with the community. Next slide, please. In the arena of education and communication, I'm excited to begin a series of conversations with members of the Academic Affairs Council. the Student Affairs Council and the Academic Senate Executive Leadership that focus on selected readings and lay the groundwork for critical inquiry and planning around diversity, equity and inclusion. This series of conversations, called the DEI colloquia, will take place over seven meetings. We've had our first meeting, which was a planning meeting. We've got six more to go that will begin in the spring. And it will provide the opportunity to learn key terms and concepts, read seminal texts, develop competency as inclusive leaders and consider ways to engage faculty and staff in redesigning the institution to increase student success. The DEI Office is also engaging the campus in DEI-centered learning through Flex Day presentations. The Fall 2021 presentation that I presented focused upon decolonization in educational institutions through a close reading of the life and music, in particular, one song of Bob Marley. The Spring 2022 presentation will examine DEI in minority-serving institutions. We know that regular and timely messaging to the campus community during periods of trauma helped the community to heal and work through challenges. On the eve of Thanksgiving, Acting Superintendent President Daharo and I sent a message of support to the campus as our community was closely watching two trials related to racial violence and white nationalism, while also still dealing with the hardships of COVID. The DEI Committee will be evaluating how best to sustain these communications and conversations and develop a process for rapid responses to future incidents of xenophobia and or racialized violence. Next slide, please. A subcommittee of the DEI Committee is collaborating with a representative of the Suscal Intertribal Council to develop a land acknowledgement for use by members of the NBC community. We have drafted written and oral statements which are currently being circulated to local tribal elders for their feedback and approval. We plan to institutionalize these land acknowledgements in collaboration with a series of educational programs about indigenous history and the importance of land acknowledgements. This has been a fruitful effort to enhance our relationship with the local indigenous community and will be sustained into the future. Other outreach efforts include networking with the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, participation in the high school counselors' breakfast yielding a request for a meeting with high school administrators to discuss DEI at their institution and at Napa Valley College, and as well outreach to DEI peers at other community colleges with the goal of building support networks and sharing best practices. Future plans include ongoing assessment of structural barriers to equity and plans to develop more effective institutional structures, increased opportunities for dialogue about equity across the institution, the development of affiliation groups to enhance recruitment and retention of diverse employees and students, and enhance DEI training and learning opportunities for employees at all levels of the organization to more effectively support our students' learning goals and reduce equity gaps. I look forward to collaborating with you in these endeavors. Best wishes to all for a peaceful, loving and healthy holiday season. Thank you.
Any questions for Dr. Munsami?
No questions. I just want to thank you for the report. I really appreciate all the hard work everybody's put into it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Patricia. And now next, we'll hear from our Director of Public Affairs and Communications, PIO, Holly Dawson.
Good evening, trustees and colleagues and community members. My presentation will be brief because I will not begin to tell you everything we're doing. You've heard our department and my name mentioned several times already. We have our fingers in lots of different projects at Napa Valley College. And here you see the website. I do want to remind you that we are indeed moving forward on the website. We've hired Denise Kaduri, a web and content specialist, to work with me in the Office of Public Affairs and Communications to move that project forward. And we will begin the, there's no other word for it, the nasty project of migration of the old website by hand to the new website in the new year with a goal of still launching in Spring 2022. So I'm very excited about that. Next slide, please. What I'm sharing with you are just a few sort of fun items that we're sharing with students. Among other things, a big focus of our area is our frontline student communications. And finals are next week. So here you can see that we're giving some helpful hints to students about how to handle their finals. We'll include these in the Friday extra that's going out this week as well as on social media. Next, please. We also always make sure to share support opportunities for students. Here you can see counseling opportunities for academic and other purposes. And then our Writing Success Center is helping students to be prepared for finals. Next, please. And of course, we continue to provide financial support for students. So we have both our emergency financial opportunities for students and grants. And we're paying off debts as well as our award spring scholarships are now open through February 1. And we're actively encouraging students to apply for those scholarships. Next. And then there's those end of semester reminders. It's time to return your rental textbooks. It's time to return computers and hotspots. So we're also spreading those messages and reminding students to do that. Next, please. And of course, as we are focusing on the end of the semester and finals, we are also preparing for registration for Spring 2022 with an active campaign to encourage students, both current and prospective, to enroll in Spring 2022 and remind them about the vaccine requirement. Next. Research, I have shared with you before that the work we do is based on research. Once in a while, we'll try something and throw something at the wall and see if it sticks. But we do like to look at opportunities and make decisions based on facts and information. We worked with the Chancellor's Office, who contracted with Logica to do an enrollment study. And I will share just a little bit of that with you. And then Media Preferences is also a national survey, and we implemented it with our students at Napa Valley College to find out about our students' interest in how they get information about various topics. And we'll have information to share on that one soon. Next, please. So I know that this is a little hard to see, but please know that the entire enrollment study has actually been uploaded to the Board Docs website. So you're welcome to download it. I encourage you to take the time and take a look at it. I think there's some really interesting information for us as we look at enrollment and for my team as we look at how to encourage students to enroll. There's information about the reasons that they're not returning, which are things like the need to work, the cost and COVID. The reasons they are returning is flexibility, financial aid, online support and career ed. High school students are interested in transfer opportunities, but they're concerned that their courses won't transfer. All of this information helps us with our messaging and helps us target students with the right message to encourage them to come back or to enroll for the first time. This information also provided information about how students get information and how they want to get information. It's website-first, so I know that that our focus and energy on the new website is the right place to be. And then it's web search and social media. And within social media, it's really interesting because we found a real interest in both current students and high school prospective students, YouTube. So we're going to be looking at doing a lot more video in the coming months. Next, please. And that's it. We are wishing you all peace and joy as we will be wishing our students as well as we are closed for the fall recess. Thank you very much.
Any questions for Holly? Okay, great. Thanks again, Holly. Thank you very much. Next, we have Dr. Sarah Parker, our Assistant Attorney, Vice President of Student Affairs, who will offer us an update on academic affairs.
Thank you. Good evening. Hi, everyone. This fall, an environment that was characterized by uncertainty and change, academic affairs continued to move forward, both routine and strategic initiatives. And my report tonight summarizes four main areas of our work across the fall semester. If you could move to the next slide, please. At the bottom of this slide here, you can see what it looks like to search for a history course in Curriculum, which is our current curriculum inventory and management system. On the right is a new product, Course Leaf Curriculum. And over a year of work has gone into the development and implementation of this system. After several delays, we'll be able to roll out this vastly improved system for curriculum management in the spring for faculty training and for use for our curriculum cycle next year. Curriculum development itself, though, has continued uninterrupted. And I'd like to call your attention to the nine ethnic studies courses on tonight's agenda later in the Academic Affairs section. These reflect an enormous amount of work by faculty as well as members of the Curriculum Committee. And these courses will be submitted for fulfillment of Area F, the new ethnic studies graduation requirement established in the CSU system with the passage of AB 1460. Last December, a year ago, you approved a board policy for credit for prior learning. A work group has been hard at work since then, making great progress in supporting faculty, developing forms, implementing petition workflow so that this can be widely available and accessed by our students. We also have numerous new certificates and are furthering work on clarifying pathways for students, in particular at a mapping workshop that will take place tomorrow. Next slide. You're already familiar with the surveys that we conducted in fall about student enrollment preferences. So I'm not going to go much into detail on that. But the chart on the right shows the distribution of our sections across the week. And I want to just share that that I'm really proud of the schedule build that reflects the input that students provided to us. In particular, we have an increased number of late afternoon and evening offerings this coming spring semester. And at the bottom, I've included some data from a, that was recently released from a statewide survey. And in this chart, you can see the dramatic changes in the way that community colleges across California have been offering their courses as a consequence of COVID. And now in, as we look ahead towards Spring 22 and then Fall 22, those numbers will shift back towards in-person instruction, but maintaining that access that students have come to appreciate in terms of online and hybrid options in our schedule. The next slide. So across the college, we use a variety of tools and systems to communicate with our students. And it's really important that we're using these tools and systems in concert with one another and also strategically so across the year, so that we're having a consistent and coordinated message to students. So one of the areas that we're working on together in academic and student affairs is a project to catalog these communications to students in an effort to better coordinate. At the start of the pandemic, a phone banking effort was organized to reach out to our students and to check in on them. We wanted to replicate and expand this effort this fall with a particular focus on those students who have left since March of 2020 and not returned. During these outreach calls, which started this week and will continue into January, students are being encouraged to apply for emergency and financial assistance that Holly just mentioned. We're connecting them to other services and support. We're sharing information about our COVID vaccination requirement. And we're taking notes on the feedback that we hear from students so that we can better understand their needs. Many areas in academic affairs are also working directly with Holly and her office on discipline-specific marketing efforts. The ESL video here is one of the videos that was completed this semester. Others are still in development, and I encourage you to click on that link if you haven't seen this video. Next slide. Investing in existing partnerships and pursuing new opportunities is a big focus of academic affairs this year. The Mount Veder Project has been moving forward all semester, and I'll be bringing you an update in early 2022. The NBC Foundation, under Jessica Thomason's leadership, has been really active in wanting to learn more about our instructional areas and has begun visiting and touring our academic areas this semester that will continue throughout the rest of the year as well. This week, academic administrators met with our counterparts at NBUSD for the third time this year. And part of our agenda included brainstorming about ways to increase and strengthen collaboration. Dr. Marriott organized for us this fall a presentation for our Child and Family Studies Program to learn more about the Family Resource Center model on college campuses and connected us with local family resource centers to explore this idea. With the finalization of the lease at Upper Valley Campus, we've been able to move forward more actively and concretely with plans. And Director Rigel will be sharing some of these with you later tonight. Finally, although not listed on the slide here as a bullet point, I want to note that the Office of Academic Affairs is invested in working with our primary partners, and that is faculty and the Academic Senate, always. But in particular, on the policy work that our campus needs to initiate this spring based on areas of improvement identified in the Iser. I'm citing the State Academic Senate and the Community College League of California jointly here with this quote. Collegial consultation works best where representatives are open and honest and are committed to working together for the benefit of the students. I wish you all a wonderful holiday season, and this concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. Any questions or comments for Dr. Parker? Okay, thank you. I'd like to call on Char Alvaron, our Social Vice President of Human Services and Training and Development, for any comments or any sharing you'd like to have make.
I just want to congratulate the graduates of our first cohort for our KEES program, which was our program for administrative confidential program, as well as the graduates for Administrative Assistant Certification Program. A presentation will be provided at our January Board. We did pull this item out of respect for the length of items already on the agenda. And we wanted to make sure that we had the Board of Trustees' full attention in our presentation. So we will bring this item back at the January Board meeting. Thank you so much, Oscar, for giving me that opportunity.
Thank you very much. I'd like to call Roger Clay. Are you in the audience? MIT, do you have any updates for from ITU, from your area? If you're, if you're on, my screen is small, so as I can't see everyone. But it sounds like Roger may not be in a meeting. But thank you, Roger. Doug Roberts, our Vice President of Business Finance, did you want to share something now or?
I have, I have something I'm going to be sharing a little bit later, so I'll, I'll save it for then.
Okay, appreciate very much. Okay, well, Madam Chair, that concludes the President's area and reports.
Thank you very much. And Charo, it sounds like you were implying that we're not always paying attention.
My colleagues prepared a fantastic presentation. And the truth is, I didn't want to upstage everyone with these presentations. That's the truth, but absolutely not, trustee Baker.
I'm just joking. And we look forward to that report next month. All right, so then now moving on, we are at our consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move approval, Baldini.
Again, Iverson.
All right. Do we have any public comment on anything from consent?
I have received none.
All right.
Trustee Baker, you jumped over some things, but we can finish this and go back. Yes, you did.
Oh, my gosh, you're right. I kind of, kind of jumped over several things. I apologize. Oh, holy cow. I was anxious to get going. All right, since we already have a motion, we will go ahead and call the vote. So trustee Dodd, your vote. Trustee Goff.
Aye.
Trustee Iverson.
Aye.
Trustee Baldini.
Aye.
Trustee Deluna.
Aye.
Trustee Rios.
Aye.
Student trustee Soro Gonzalez.
Aye.
And I also will vote in the affirmative, so we have approved our consent calendar. And now that I have been back to 10.2, good heavens. I was so busy ribbing Charo, I lost track of where we were. All right, so this is the CCCT Board nominations. This is placed on the agenda to allow trustees to consider whether they want to run for a seat on the statewide board. So we can take action to nominate someone in January so that they'll have time to do some campaigning at the CCLC workshop in January if they wish to run for it. If we have anybody has any questions about this or wants to go ahead and throw their hat in the ring, we're going to officially nominate in January if there's someone who's interested. If we have no one right now, and you think of it later on this month, between now and the 18th, you could always just let us know. So now we have the Core Indicators Report, 10.3. This was from Dr. Warnall.
Yes, good evening, Lord.
Yes, good evening, Board. Let's see, Captain, oh, perfect, thank you. So the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one Core Indicators Report is attached to the agenda for today's meeting. And the Core Indicators Report is a regular report, which is produced by RIPI each year. Through this report, we monitor our performance against the institution set standards that we set for five metrics associated with student achievement. Establishing institution set standards and monitoring performance against those standards is an accreditation requirement. And one unique feature of the Core Indicators Report is that it is a one-page summary of recent institutional performance. The Core Indicators Report is one of the ways MBC monitors performance to ensure that the institution is accomplishing its goals for student success. And hopefully, that sounds familiar to you, as standard four C A, four C eight, sorry, indicates that the governing board should regularly review key indicators of student learning and achievement for improving academic quality. So NBC established institution set standards in two thousand and thirteen, and we revisited them in two thousand and nineteen. And that year, we increased all of the standards except the successful course completion rate, which remained with a standard of seventy percent. And in two thousand and nineteen, we also established stretch goals as required by the ACCJC, and we identified the threshold that should trigger an institutional process to examine performance more closely should we ever dip below that threshold. And so in two thousand and nineteen, we established a threshold of ninety-five percent of each standard. And I'll provide an example to explain what achieving ninety-five percent of an established standard means, and I'll do that based on the successful course completion standard of seventy percent. So ninety-five percent of seventy percent is sixty-six point five percent. So if we ever dip below a successful course completion rate of sixty-six point five percent, it should trigger an institutional process. And just as an FYI to provide some context for the ninety-five percent and why we chose that, this practice of identifying a proportion of an established standard or goal was an approach that was used by the Chancellor's Office regarding Perkins Four Goals and the so-called Final Agreed Upon Performance Levels that districts establish with the Chancellor's Office for CTE programs. So since two thousand and thirteen, when we established the standards, our performance has always exceeded the established standard for each metric. And in two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one, with the report that you see before you now, we deviated from that pattern. So, and I'm going to call your attention to the final column on the right regarding transfers. So last year, we dipped below the standard of three hundred transfers to CSU and UC institutions combined when we claimed two hundred and ninety transfers. So that, so you can notice that the other three columns are represented with a check mark to indicate that we met each of those standards. And then for the final column, I marked it with a graphic indicating a warning or kind of paying that we need to pay attention to that. So while performance was lower than the standard, it was not below the ninety-five percent of the standard that we established. And that number would be two hundred and eighty-five. So while a reduction in transfers might not be too surprising in light of the pandemic last year, and maybe students opting to take a stop-out year or delay their entry, it's something that we should continue to monitor, and we will through our annual Core Indicators Report. And that is all I have. I'll be answering questions.
Any questions for Dr. Warnall on this one? Well, thank you. So now, I don't think it took it to go away because you have ten point four, two thousand and twenty-one Institutional Self-Evaluation Report for Accreditation. Dr. Warnall.
So I do not have a PowerPoint or anything for this. This is the point in the process where all turns to you guys. All, everything that's been done up to now, and now it's your big moment.
Well, hopefully, everyone's been paying attention. So did I hear Mr. Did I hear Mr. Baldini? Give us a motion?
Move approval.
There we go.
Second, by Rios.
Second, do we have any discussion? Any, do we need to take, we have public comment, a public comment on this one?
No, I have not received any public comment, and I see no hands.
It's going to be fast and painless after all that work. All right then. Trustee Dodd, your vote, sir.
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
I'd like to say aye and a huge thank you to Dr. Warnall and company for this.
And Trustee Iverson?
I am an aye, and as well, I am very appreciative and thank you for all the hard work with this, so thank you. Aye.
Trustee Baldini?
Aye.
Trustee Deluna?
I also would, thanks for all your hard work, and I know it was a bumpy ride, but we're finally here, and I appreciate all of the, all of your hard work. Thank you.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
Student Trustee Soto Gonzalez?
Aye.
And I will also vote aye. So we have a unanimous approval of the Iser, and yeah, it's been a little bumpy, and it's not over. Now we have to actually do the work. But I'm looking forward to coming in and signing this document. I will be on campus tomorrow. So let's see, we are moving on then to, already did consent, so we can go down to twelve point one, Approval of Supplemental Employees Retirement Program, SERP, and Charo, I believe we have a representative from Kenan here to make a presentation.
We do, and good evening, everyone. To, one of the ways to address our current financial situation, we started having a conversation with Kenan, representatives from Kenan, to explore an option of offering a supplemental early retirement plan affectionately called SERP. So we'll be using that acronym throughout this presentation. We are asking the Board tonight to authorize us, the district, to continue with this exploration of a SERP. And I have invited Deborah Despain, the Vice President of Employee Benefits for Kenan, to provide us some more information, provide you all more information to help you make that decision to authorize us to enter into this phase of exploration. And with that, I would ask Deborah Despain, if you can please take the floor.
Great, thank you, Charo. Good evening. Thank you for having me today. Is it okay if I share my screen, or would you like me to use what's in your agenda?
If you don't mind, I will open here for you. Is that okay if you just grab me a lolly?
Yeah, that works, that works well. So, so thank you again for having me and allowing me to do a presentation for you tonight in regards to the Supplemental Employee Retirement Plan, or SERP, that we have put together and worked very closely with Charo with. If we could go to the next page, please. So this is the basic SERP development process, and what this is, is really this is where we figure out what we're going to be able to look at, and this is where, how we put the proposal together. So first, the purpose is, which is to define the desired outcome for the district, which is typically wanting to achieve some savings in the plan for the district. We also look at the demographics. We also look at the different benefit levels to determine which would work best for the district and the offer that the district would like to make. We also then go through enrollment. This is offering out to the employees that are eligible for this and how that's going to look to the employees. And then we also talk about, you know, some of the HR controls on how it will look going forward in hiring practice and where, you know, over the next five years, you might want to look at hiring for replacements for these positions that may go into a SERP process. Next page, please. So Supplemental Employee Retirement Plan, again, is SERP. It's a, it's Kenan's Early Retirement Incentive Solution. We've been doing this since nineteen eighty-four. We do it for a lot of reasons, but primarily it's to address the declining enrollment in a lot of school districts and community colleges. It's also to assist in proactive staff planning, where you may be looking at a layoff. Maybe you wouldn't have to do that if you were to offer a SERP instead. Also enhancing retirement benefits. So for those who may be thinking about leaving and going into whatever their next journey is going to be, and compensating long-term employees versus, you know, maybe they're ready, maybe they're working past what, you know, their STIRS or PIRS might be paying them, so, you know, looking at something like that. But primarily, it's addressing declining enrollment and proactive staff planning. Next page, please. So SERP is a win-win simply because it allows the district to develop a plan and offer a plan out to those employees that may be ready to retire, and it gives that job security for existing employees. So, you know, those that may be worrying about a layoff or something like that, if you offer a SERP, maybe the layoff would, would not have to occur or would be less than what it would be normally. And it also provides, you know, a heads up on budget and staff planning when the SERP is actually put into place or if it's put into place. Next page, please. So what is the benefit for the retiree? Well, it allows them potentially to start retirement early or gives them a financial bridge into retirement. They just have to retire from the, from the college. They don't have to retire from the state. There's no requirement for them to retire from the state. It also provides several payout options. We'll go over that in a little bit. And it, well, those options, a few of those will allow them to roll over into an eligible, eligible retirement account. And then there's also allowing existing investments to grow. So they could take this early retirement from the college, and then if they chose to, they could go work at a different college or a district or somewhere else, and then just roll that money into savings and let it grow with investments. Next page, please. So on to demographics. This is what we're going to talk about now, just understanding the demographics and how we got to that point. Next page. So what we're looking at as a plan to offer is employees must be at least fifty-five years of age and have at least five years of service. So looking at the demographics, faculty has twenty-nine total eligible employees for the SERP plan based upon the demographics that we just laid out, fifty-five years and five years of age. The average age is sixty-one point six years, and the average service is eighteen point one years. Administration, there's seventeen eligible employees at sixty-two point four years of age with seventeen years of service. And classified, there's thirty-seven eligible employees, average age is sixty-one point seven and seventeen point three years of service. So we have a very good group to look at and to offer this out to. Next page, please. So I know this is very small, and I apologize for that, but what this is, is a reverse, kind of a reverse diagram. This is based on faculty, so we really need to see the bottom, if we could, please. Yeah, the really small part, exactly. So what we're looking at, if you look at the very first column that says age fifty-five, the way you would read that is, for those that are age fifty-five, there's five employees that are under, or that are fifty-five, but there's twenty-nine employees that are fifty-five and older. So that's where we get that number in the demographics of twenty-nine. If you go over to sixty-two, what you can see is that there's a number of employees are four, but there's thirteen that's sixty-two and older. Okay, so that's where we look at those numbers. So at twenty-nine for faculty, that's a pretty good number, looking at age fifty-five. We choose the age fifty-five because that is the retirement age that STIRS allows to go, which is why we typically look at that. Next page is going to be the administration, and if you look at the bottom, there's seventeen that are fifty-five and older. So that's where we get the number of, in the demographics, of seventeen for administration. And you can see here, you've got some that are sixty-eight, some that are seventy. Certainly with, you know, a good number of years of services in the top, in the top portion of this slide, where the, all of the little dots are. Yep, you can see here. Years of service versus age, it looks like you've got one around sixty-three with years of service of between forty and forty-five, so quite a bit years of service. And then if you go to the next page, this is classified, and you can see under age fifty-five, there are thirty-seven employees that are fifty-five and older. And again, some good years of service there, too. Looks like the oldest is about sixty-seven with between twenty and twenty-five years of service. If you look at the top portion, at this little, kind of towards the right, yeah, exactly. Thank you. Thank you so much. So we have a really good, you know, set of employees that are eligible for the SERP if they're interested in taking the SERP. Next page. Okay, economics. Go ahead and move on to the next page. So here's where we really look at the cost. So if it's going to generate a cost saving, so we have, you know, the, the replaced positions and unreplaced positions. So if you have retirees, the estimated amount is one hundred four thousand. A new hire is about fifty-nine thousand four hundred ninety-four. The statutory and healthcare is about two thousand nine hundred and forty-eight. Savings is about thirty-four thousand four hundred and nine. If you were to not replace this position, then the amount would still be retiree of a hundred and four three ninety-eight, zero for the new hire, so you would have that savings. Statutory would still be the two thousand nine hundred and forty-eight. Incentive at sixty-five percent would be thirteen thousand five ninety-one, and then savings for the district would be ninety-three thousand seven hundred and fifty-five. So this is how we look from one, one position to another. Certainly, you're going to have some replaced positions, but it's entirely possible that you're going to have a few unreplaced positions as well. If you could go to the next page. So what you have here, these are the options that the employees can choose from. If they decide to move forward with submitting their paperwork for a SERP plan, they have nine options that they can choose from. So options one, two, three, the IRS looks at those as lifetime options. So these are not eligible to roll over into any other style plan, any other annuity. So number one is life only, and that's for the life of the employee. There is no survivor or beneficiary on this one. It's once the employee passes, then the plan ends. The joint plus fifty percent survivor really depends on the age of the survivor. This is assuming that the, the beneficiary or survivor is of the same age as the employee. Certainly, they could do something with grandchildren, which would change this amount because there would be such a big differential between the employee and their survivor if it were a grandchild. But this happens if the employee or the retiree passes, then fifty percent of this would end up going to that survivor for the remainder of their lifetime. Life for ten years is just that. This does have beneficiaries on it. If the employee, if the retiree should pass prior to ten years, then the beneficiary would receive the, the amount after he passed. If the retiree were to pass in year eleven or after, there would be no beneficiary benefits. We do see these taken occasionally, but they're not the ones that we see primarily. You look at number four through eight, there's an asterisk there. These are set payments. So for five years, six years, seven or eight, eight or nine years, if they were to choose one of these, this is what they would get every month for five years or six years, et cetera. The most chosen option is a five-year. They get this again every month. So you can see here, faculty, it's about one thousand one hundred twenty-two. This is average numbers. This is not, not actual until we know who would be interested in the plan, so this is average. So administration would be one thousand three sixty, three thirty-six ninety, and classified would be seven sixty-four fifty-five. They can take these as cash payouts. They can actually just send them right over to one of their investment plans or right into the annuity. They can roll it over to an IRA, what have you. Twice per year, they get an opportunity to make a change. Maybe they take it out in cash, and then they decide, well, I really need to put some of this into my IRA. Maybe they take it out in cash and then they decide, well, I really need to put some of this into my IRA. So then they make a change and some goes into IRA. And then let's say six months later, I really need it back in cash. They can get it back in cash. So two times per year, they get to make a change. Option number nine is a 10-year benefit. It's very similar to some of those up top. IRS really says that once you retire, 10 years is your lifetime. I didn't make the rules on this, but this is what they say. So being a lifetime benefit is not eligible for rollover. But this is what the benefit would be and there would be a beneficiary here as well. Okay, next page, please. So couple scenarios to look at. This one is based upon 65% of salary and all retire, all employees that take the plan would be replaced. So at 65% of salary, we would estimate for faculty, eight would take the plan. All would be replaced. The net savings would be 655,308. Administration, we would anticipate having four take the plan, all being replaced. There would be a decrease in that of 183,856. Because you're going to be replacing more or less like-for-like. And then same with classified. We would estimate 10 would take the plan. And there would be a decrease in your overall savings of 364,934. So an estimated 22 participants. But the estimated keenon SERP net savings would be 106,519. We say it like this because if there's already folks that are on the books to retire, we don't take that. We don't show that as savings, it's already there. We only show what we anticipate the savings being from folks actually taking the plan. Not those that have already notified that they may want to retire, okay? So we don't add that savings in to increase the savings because it would be there already. Next page, please. So this is looking at possible positions not being replaced. So same eight on faculty, but not having two replaced. You're now looking at a savings of between 600,000 to 1,308,468. For administration, one only would be replaced, still four taking the plan. That's a savings of 347,816. Classified, two not replaced. That's a savings of 288,995. All in, again, the same 22. However, five would not be replaced. And then you would be seeing a savings for you of 1,945,279. So not having some of the positions being not replaced. You can see there's a, you know, a huge savings between all replaced and a few not being replaced. Okay, next page. So we're now looking at enrollment. Keep going on to the next page. So this is the timeline that we are looking at for this particular SERP offering. So we started looking at this in the fall. We are now here at December 9th for board approval. This approval is just approval for us to allow us to make the offer. This is not approving the plan to go forward as, you know, it's absolute. This is just an approval for us to offer the plan. If this is approved, then we would be looking at announcement letters being sent out to employees tomorrow. And then group orientation meetings would be in January. Then there would be individual counseling sessions. I'll go over this in a minute. In February, we would be asking for the final determinations. So those who want to participate would need to submit their information on March 15th. That's when the enrollment period closes. March 22nd, we would be taking the actual data for those who are interested in participating. And redoing all of the cost estimates for you based on actual information. Based on that, we would bring it back to the board for your review and then final approval to move forward. So right now, we're just asking for approval to offer. Then employees that would end up retiring in June. July is the plan effective date and August 1st would be when they would receive their first benefit payment. Okay, next page. So here's just a list of the initial communications that we would be talking about. Just the board resolution, any participation revisions, you know, break even numbers. And that's going to depend on what the actual outcome is. Ability to revoke the offers if participation is not met. And that's what we're putting in the communication letter. That this plan could be rescinded if the goals of the college is not met. So that's very clear from the beginning, if it's allowed to make the offer. Then general announcements, if there are, the superintendent's message, the announcement letter. District-wide emails, we can assist with those things. And then any union communications, we can coordinate with union communications. Or any announcements to websites or letters to members, we can assist with all of that. Next page. So group sessions, we can hold group sessions via Zoom or we can come in person as well, if that's acceptable. This is basically just, you know, an overview of how the plan works for everybody that attends the session. They can ask questions, whatever they, you know, whatever questions they have, gives them the opportunity to take a look. This is when they're going to have their packet. So every employee receives a packet of information that's specific to that employee. It will be based on their salary. The annuity options are going to be based on their options. Everything is direct and personalized to the employee. There's also a discussion about the decision-making assistance options. There's reminders of the deadlines. There's signup assistance for individual counseling. So once the group sessions are held, then we go to individual counseling. Go to the next page, please. So individual, it's a little backwards here, but for the group meeting. There will have, CalSTIRS will be available at that meeting. And once we determine the date for this group meeting, then we're going to ask the district to go ahead and give CalPERS a call. And ask them to attend. We can certainly ask them, but they really won't respond to us. It really has to come from the college for them to be able to attend. So usually, CalSTIRS will get up and have a conversation about what it means and how the process is. For retiring from CalSTIRS and the same with PIRS. You're not requiring that they retire from the state, but it gives them information. On the off chance that maybe they're ready to fully retire. So that gives them an opportunity to ask questions of STIRS and PIRS. Next page. Medical benefits are a very large part of the benefits. So, you know, the SERP plans again involve the coordination of district staff to assist with communication. All of this is going to be noted in the employee group meetings. It will also be discussed during the individual meetings. So, you know, retirees really want to make sure they have coverage if they were to retire. So this is part of that conversation. Go ahead to the next page. Okay, individual counseling sessions. So we really like that we can provide the individual counseling sessions. They're facilitated by actual retirees that have retired from school districts or colleges. These are not, you know, other employees from, you know, the private sector. These are actual retirees that have gone through the SERP session. And they provide the individual counseling sessions. We can set up by Zoom or by telephone. It's about a 30-minute session typically, can go longer if necessary. Again, counselors are previous SERP participants. They will do an overview of the paperwork and they will give them personalized attention. The employees can bring anybody they would like to bring to these individual sessions. Their spouses, their children, any legal advisors, however they choose. They can invite anybody they want to. And the counselor will walk them through exactly, you know, how it happens. What to do, how to fill out the paperwork. And they're eligible, are eligible, available to answer questions on, so what did you do when you retired type thing? You know, sometimes people are not really necessarily think they're ready to retire. Because they don't know what the next step is going to be. And there are conversations that can be had during these sessions and have been lots of times to help folks move on. And then sometimes, you know, you get into the individual counseling session and the person comes in and says, where do I sign? I'm ready to go. And it's, you know, it's a non-issue, so they're ready. Next page, please. So they can, during these individual counseling sessions, we have a website. So that the district can track what's going on. Participants can schedule and change appointments online. They can provide any automated confirmation and reminder emails. We can assist with that if we need to do that. And then there's dashboards and reports to track participation. So you can see if there's, you know, 22, how many have gone through it? How many have said no, how many have said maybe, that type of thing. So we can provide that information during the enrollment process. Just so we know if we need to do some reminders, we can. If we need to do some outreach, we can. We want to be sure everybody has, you know, had an opportunity to look at what their options are. And have a conversation with counselor. Next page, please. So now we're in HR controls. Go on to the next page, please. So this is monitoring the hiring actions, knowing what the assumptions are, communicating hiring restrictions. You know, we really want to make sure that there's an understanding of how your overall savings can look over a five-year period. So keep in mind, the SERP is a five-year period. You're going to see the majority of your savings right up front, that first year where you have non-replacements. But in the second or third year, if you replace those folks, then that's going to kind of bite into those savings a little bit. So just, you know, we have a good conversation about looking at what your hiring actions are and what next steps are. And we're here to assist with that throughout that process. Next page. So the SERP team members is keenon, we're the plan design consultants. We assist with putting the proposals together. The contract administrator, we assist with the SERP. We are the administrator, not only for you, the employer, but also for any other retirees that take the plan. If they have questions, they can call us after they've taken the plan throughout their five-year period for their annuity. Anything that we can do, we assist. We, so it would be, you know, if you get someone that receives, you receive a call from a retiree. You send it on over to us and we handle it for you. The SERP is provided by Mutual of Omaha. They're rated A+ by the AM Best Company and they facilitate all the payments to the retirees. And next page. So we've done this for quite a long time. We've done about 457 plans and I think this is not quite the correct number. We've done quite a few more since 1984. 20 school districts implementing SERP each year on average. And we've been able to save about 821 million for our clients. So we've been doing this for quite a while and we, I think we do a pretty good job. But just wanted to give you the team experience. And then last, any questions? I know I went through that fairly fast because you've got a lot of agenda left ahead of you, or behind me, I should say.
Any questions? It's pretty straightforward, actually. So very good presentation. Thank you. All right, do we have a second?
Second, you know.
All righty then. So any public comment? Any further discussion?
I see no public comment.
All righty then. Trustee Dodd had to step away, but he will be back with us later. So trustee Duff, what is your vote?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
Trustee Baldini?
Aye.
Trustee Deluna?
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
Student trustee Guttaro Gonzalez?
Aye.
And I will also vote the affirmative. So we have an approved supplemental employee retirement program assessment and application phase. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it and Charles, you and I will get together. So thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you.
All right then, so then moving on to 3.1. This is the Second Amendment to the Pre-Development Agreement for Campus Student Housing Project. We don't have any presentation, but if anyone has any questions, Doug Roberts is with us to assist. We have any questions from the board? I think we've all reviewed this already. Any public comment?
I have received none and I see no hands raised.
All right then, could I get a motion to approve the amendment?
Move to approve.
Second, so it was from Rios and Iverson, correct?
Correct.
All right, and I don't believe trustee Dodd has returned yet. So trustee Goff, your vote?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
Trustee Baldini?
Aye.
Trustee Deluna?
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
Student trustee Guttaro Gonzalez?
Aye.
And then I will also vote aye. So we have now amended our pre-development agreement extension. So thank you. Moving on to 3.2. Amended 2021 to 2022 unrestricted fund budget. And this is Doug Roberts. You said you wanted to wait, now it's your turn.
There you go, yeah. Thank you for listening to my presentation teaser. And thank you for putting the amended budget up on the screen. As some of you will recall, it was just three months ago. I had been here for about three weeks and had to give you all an adopted budget. But I had promised that I would come back with, you know, as I got, you know, actual numbers to work with. That I would come back with an adjusted budget. And this is the first of, well, at least two more that I'll be putting together for you. I'll be doing one as of January 1st and I'll be putting one together as of January 31st. Which as many of you know, and I won't let you forget, that's my last day. But what I have done is the, some of the columns you've seen before, the audited 1920 numbers. The pre-audit 2021 numbers. We are currently working on the audit right now. I'm showing you the actual expenditures that we had as of 12/1/20. The actual expenditures we have as of December 1st this year. There's a comparison there with the final budget. And then there's the recommendation for the adjusted budget numbers. And the variance of the recommended adjusted budget. And the changes in transfers that I'm asking you to approve today. So that you have an understanding of how I came about these numbers. And there's many things that in the reading that trustee Baker had mentioned from Ms. McCart. I have, you know, striven to get as much actual numbers as I can. A lot of what you're seeing in the change for the revenues that we have. There's only a slight change in property taxes from what we had budgeted. But there is a fairly substantial change in other local income. And that's because I'm basing our local incomes that we're going to get for 21, 22. To be similar to what we actually received in 2021. As you can see, actuals last year were a little over 3 million. And what I'm budgeting for this year is a little under 3 million. So very comparative to where we've been before. Now with regards to the expenditures. What I have done is I have looked at the actual expenditures that we've had to date. And I have then used the annualizers that I have calculated from the past five years. Of actual expenditures as compared to as of December 1st. To the actual expenditures for those years. To then multiply the expenditure to date to come up with a reasonable projection of what we will spend for the year. To kind of talk a little bit about, you know, annualizers. In a perfect world, if we spent, you know, the same amount of money every month in every category. When you get to January 1st, you should be able to take all of your expenditures, multiply them by two. And that would be what you'd be spending for the year. You get to the fifth month, you'd be multiplying by 2.4. Actually, from what's been going on in the past five years. Um, actually, from what's been going on in the past five years, um, you can, you know, our, for our actual, um, salary expenditures, um, and as it's happening this year, you can see that the annualized, or I've seen where the annualizers are a little higher than anticipated. But that is because generally we start off the year with some open positions. And then as we get further on in the year, we fill some of those positions. And so by using an average of the, uh, annualizers over the past five years, um, I have a lot of confidence, you know, in these numbers. And as the year progresses and as we continue to make these presentations to you, and I'm going to be, uh, giving all this information to, to Arissa Puck to put this together for you. Um, the projections that you're going to get are going to be more and more accurate as, as time goes along. Um, but as you can see, um, what we originally budgeted and what the, uh, changes have been, um, it, it, there has been a significant change, uh, with regards to what we have for budgeted salaries. Um, but as you can see, the, well, I have recommended there are a little more in line with the increase you would expect, uh, based upon the salary increases that we actually gave. I think at the time that, that the budget was being put together by my predecessor, um, I think there was still some, um, unknown issues with regards to just how much, uh, some, some of those increases would be. Uh, we know what they are now and so those are reflected in the numbers that are, are before you. Employee benefits. Um, as you can see, we had to do a little bit of, of increase for, uh, STIRS and PERS because we had increases in STIRS and PERS this year. And, um, but otherwise I think our, our numbers are good. If we scroll down a little bit more to the next page, you kind of get, so we can see the bottom line. Um, there you go. Because the, the, the same, um, methodology I use for, for salaries and benefits, I've used here for our other operating expenses. Um, as you can see, for other operating expenses, the change is only about $34,000 from what was originally budgeted. Um, but overall, um, the, the change is, is a, about a quarter million dollars uh, decrease in, in our net operating, um, revenue. But we are still projecting for, um, the, this year, a, um, a, a slight increase of 109, uh, well, roughly about $110,000 to, to go to our fund balance. And after the presentation we have of the SERP and one of the things that I'm, I'm going to be doing for the board next month is I will be, uh, putting together a projection of, of revenues and expenditures uh, for 2022, 23, and 23, 24 that reflects the salary increases that we have negotiated and the increases in STIRS and PERS with a projection of the savings that we may be, uh, able to, to, uh, achieve through the SERP, um, program. I will be, um, making a presentation of this material to PBC tomorrow. And hopefully I'll be able to, um, share with, with the community my, my projections for the, the following two years. Um, but I wanted to get that information out to you as soon as I can so you all have an idea of where the district is heading. But primarily what I'm asking for tonight is that you approve this adjusted budget and the changes and transfers that I have been indicated on, on that column to the far right-hand side.
Thank you very much. It's very, very detailed and very, uh, very interesting to see this, actually. So, um, any questions from anyone?
Move approval.
All right. Do we have? We have a second?
I have a second.
All right. I heard that from, uh, Iverson.
Trustee Rios.
And I don't believe that Jeff is back yet. So trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
Trustee Baldini?
Aye.
Trustee Deluna?
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
Student trustee Soto Gonzalez?
Aye.
And I will also vote in the affirmative. So we now have an adjusted budget and we've got the transfers approved. Thank you very much, Mr. Roberts.
Well, thank you. And, and yeah, I wish everybody happy holidays. As you may have noticed, my two middle columns were red and green.
Hopefully more black, actually, but that's okay. We'll take it. Thank you very much. All right then. So now, moving on, we have the, uh, academic affairs information and discussion items. We have curriculum changes for fall 2021. There is no presentation, but if anyone has any questions, uh, Dr. Parker is with us this evening. Does anyone have any questions? Not, uh, do we have any public comment?
I see no public comment and I haven't received none. I just want to call it to your attention, there are two documents. So you're approving both of these documents, both of them?
Yes. Oh, you do them together as a single item, correct? Okay. Good, good, good. All right then. So do I have?
I'm sorry, I do have a raised hand.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't.
That's okay. Um, I, I, um, I want to make a, um, a correction in the proposal. The curriculum committee is part of the academic senate. It does not act alone. So when the, when the curriculum committee makes a recommendation for approval, it goes to the academic senate and the academic senate is the body that recommends directly to the Board of Trustees in matters of curriculum. So it, no, no academic senate committee can act on its own. Therefore, to say that the proposal is recommended by the curriculum committee, the curriculum committee recommended to the academic senate, which voted this, um, curriculum packet at, to recommend to the board to approve it since it's relied primarily. So if, if, um, we can make those, that change in the agenda moving forward, I really would appreciate it. We're catching that, we're catching a lot of this, um, since, um, I think there's, like I said, um, a misunderstanding of how the academic senate works. And so to reflect a more accurate, um, picture, the curriculum committee does not have the authority to recommend to the Board of Trustees. Only the academic senate can recommend to the Board of Trustees. Thank you.
Uh, Dr. Tahada, my office submits these recommendations so I can be sure that we adjust that in our future, um, items that we bring forward. And I know that both the curriculum committee, um, in their recommendation to the senate and the senate's recommendations tonight, everybody is thrilled to bring this curriculum recommendation forward.
No, absolutely. There's no, there's nothing.
I'm, I'm affirming, uh, what I know we, we agree on.
Okay. Um, it's just that, um, um, I want to be sure that we're clear and that the board understands that it's the academic senate that has the relationship with the board. Thank you.
Thank you. So do we have, do we have a motion to approve these two items as recommended by the academic senate? I move to approve. I heard. Okay, so, uh, trustee Goff with, uh, trustee Baldini as our second. Uh, any public comment? We already did that, didn't we? So, so any more discussion? No. All right then. Uh, trustee Goff, your vote? Oh wait, trustee Dodd is aye. Trustee Dodd, your vote?
Aye.
All right. Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
Trustee Baldini?
Aye.
Trustee Deluna?
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
Student trustee Soto Gonzalez?
Aye.
And then I will also vote affirmatively. So we have approved the curriculum changes. Moving on now, we have an update on the Upper Valley campus. And I believe Dr. Parker is going to start us off.
Yes, I'm very pleased if you haven't had the chance to meet her to introduce you to the Director of Upper Valley Campus and Community Education, Chantel Ridgell, who stepped into this role at the start of the pandemic and with the future use of Upper Valley campus still under consideration. She immediately understood how meaningful the Upper Valley campus is to the community and committed to establishing a, um, and supporting a renewed purpose for this beautiful asset to the college and to the community and will share some of her initial work with you tonight in her presentation.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, Acting President Oscar DeHaro and all community members present. As Dr. Parker mentioned, I am Chantel Ridgell, the Director of the Upper Valley Campus and Community Education. And I have a brief update for you tonight. And next slide, please. So the UVC focuses on five areas. Community education, which is comprised of workshops and fee-based classes designed to help community members grow professionally and personally. We have continuously provided not-for-credit culinary art and language courses uh, throughout the pandemic, whether online and in person when we can. Our community ed program aligns with our institutional strategic goal four of achieving equity in student outcomes. The area of hospitality, culinary and tourism management has been redesigned into a completely for-credit program and advanced culinary students will continue their education beyond the main campus at the UVC where the kitchen facility was designed with the purpose of practicing advanced culinary techniques. This area aligns with the strategic goal three, increasing student achievement and completing educational and job training goals. For community relationships and events, we proactively seek community input, opportunities for engagement, and actively pursue the development and expansion of community partnerships. Our community partnerships help us to support the institutional strategic goal five, a fiscal stability as a community-supported district. Non-credit is a crucial focus area as non-credit programs serve as a key contributor to open access for students with diverse backgrounds and students seeking ways to improve their earning power, literacy skills, and access to higher education. We further support institutional strategic goal three by expanding our non-credit programs. We are actually currently offering an ongoing non-credit art class specifically for older adults as a direct result of a community request. Our small-scale farming program aligns with institutional strategic goal one by working with local educational partners to promote the opportunities we can offer at NVC. And this brings us to the next slide. The Small-Scale Farming Program. It's a three-year training cohort designed to help students transition to a job or become business owners in the farming industry. With premium farming land, the Upper Valley campus is uniquely qualified to support this program. In partnership with Napa Valley Adult School, we will offer farming education to our students while growing our program offerings at the Upper Valley campus. And we know that this would garner community support. This program is devoted to building the skills needed to help students become self-supporting farmers and business owners. The space would serve as an educational facility while also operating as a functional agricultural business for students. And this program would also allow us to maximize our outdoor space and help support the community. So the top-left picture is about a half an acre that will serve as a pilot farm for students. And then to the right of that, that is the greenhouse and the raised beds, which will be used for, the greenhouse will be used for seed starting and the raised beds for culinary herbs and vegetables. And then below that, along Pope Street, would be the teaching orchard. So that's going to serve as a classroom space for students interested in learning to tend fruit and nut trees, cane berries, and perennial herbs. And students will partner with our culinary program to design the herb beds in the bottom-left. Um, and that, those beds will support the culinary program. Next slide, please. This spring, the Upper Valley campus will host an open-house-style community-building event. We are currently exploring connections between the Upper Valley campus, the Small-Scale Farming Program, and NVC's Mount Veda property. At the open house, community members will have the opportunity to gather together, enjoy refreshments, and share ideas for moving forward. This event will also serve as an introduction to our Mount Veda property as tours will be arranged. Next slide, please. To date, we have collaborated with the community in a number of ways. We have conducted a community survey and expanded community education and non-credit offerings as a result of those survey responses. We have made the UVC available to community partners for team-building events, graduations, and several rounds of vaccine clinics. Looking ahead, we are excited to grow our partnership with the City of St. Helena. They are currently moving through their Division of State Architect review and have projected the week of April 18th, 2022 as the start of the move-in and the week of May 9th, 2022 as the DSA and project closeout. So here, you're looking at a picture of the Dia de los Muertos event held at the UVC on October 31st, 2021. And this event was made possible through collaboration between the UVC, the City of St. Helena, Up Valley Family Center, and the St. Helena Community Band. And if you have any questions, um, please let me know. And thank you so much for your time tonight.
Any questions or comments?
I just want to say that it's exciting to see that there's, uh, activity and things happening now. Um, I think it's great and, uh, can't wait to see where it comes, goes to. Thank you.
And I am so pleased to see that the St. Helena Community Band is still performing because I didn't know that they were able to do that right now. It's fabulous. Uh, so, there we go. So moving on now, we have the Napa Valley Unified School District, Napa Valley Adult School Agreement for Small-Scale Farming Program. And this is something we need to take action on. Do we have any, a thing that we need to review? Anybody questions about it? If not, do we have any public comment?
Uh, I have no public comment on this.
All right. Thank you. And then do I have a motion for approval?
A motion to approve.
All right. Do we have a second?
Iverson, second.
Any discussion? All right then. Trustee Dodd, your vote?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
Trustee Baldini?
Aye.
Trustee Deluna?
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
Student trustee Soto Gonzalez?
Aye.
I will also vote aye. So we have passed an agreement with NBUSD, the adult school, to offer small-scale farming. Very, very cool opportunity. All right then. So now we are moving on to the Cleary Report. I believe Chief Amber Wade is with us this evening to provide this for us.
I'm bored and everyone in attendance, sorry, my internet was working great and it just cut out, so.
I know the feeling.
You all hear me okay? Okay. Um, so I'm here to present our annual Cleary Report. And I will start with a little background about Cleary. Uh, the Cleary Act came about when a college student, Jean Cleary, was raped and murdered while living in a hall. Um, her parents found out the crime statistics at the college and were very upset about it and said they never would have let her attend the school. So the Cleary Act came about in the early 1990s. And Catherine, are you able to bring up the report for me, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you. So, as you can see here, this is the annual security report. It's also called the Cleary Act Report or Student Right to Know. And in that report, there are many things. There includes the crime reporting procedures, safety and security information, prevention, resource available to our students and staff on campus. And then if you go to the end, page 16, this is where you kind of get to the meat of the information, and these are our crime statistics. So, as you can see, our crime statistics are in here for the past three years. Broke up into different. So, there's our categories for on-campus. There's also public property, and that's areas like Kennedy Park. And then there is the non-campus centers like American Canyon High School. So, you can see our statistics are pretty low, and this is very common for a community college, especially one that doesn't have housing on campus or a major sports team, sororities returning these. Those usually increase your crime statistics. But again, no place is totally crime-free. You will see we have a slight increase here in the number of burglaries and property crimes on campus. And we've kind of been combating this with random 24-hour patrols, so we've been seeing this happen when we're not on campus patrolling. And then you'll also see an increase on the public property. So, that's Kennedy Park. And I believe those are most likely caused because of the large homeless encampment there and the increase in crime having to do with that. At the very end, you'll see our statistics for our Upper Valley Campus. They're usually really low. In fact, I believe most of them, you'll see our zeros for this past three years. So, again, this report is available year-round on our website, and we do send out the notification each year, typically in September. You probably all received it. We do a push-through NBC Safe System, so you'll receive push notifications on your cell phone, text messages, and then also an email to make sure we're getting this information out to the campus. Are there any questions?
I don't hear any. So, thank you very much for that report.
Thank you.
All right then, moving along to 16.1, Board Meeting Calendar. We don't have any presentation, but we can take a look at it real quick.
I just want to call your attention to the December meeting that is later, a little bit later than normal because of the elections.
Correct. And we don't have anything in here for, normally we would have a superintendent evaluation meeting, but since we're going to be bringing someone brand-new on, it's, we're probably going to have some meetings here and there just for getting to know this person. And we will also have our special meetings in February for interviews. It might be actually March, sometime in the spring, but those things will be determined as we get closer. And please note, yes, that our next meeting, our next, very next meeting is on a Tuesday. So, all right. So, do we have to adopt this?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a motion to adopt the meeting calendar for 2022?
I move to adopt.
Thank you. Trustee Deluna, do we have a second?
Second. Baldini?
Hey, any public comment? Yeah, further discussion? All right, Trustee Dodd, your vote? I think that was an aye.
It was.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
Trustee Baldini? Trustee Deluna?
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
Student Trustee Soto Gonzalez?
Aye.
I will also vote the affirmative, so we have a meeting calendar for next year. Thank you very much. Oh, now, 6.2, Nomination and Election of Board Officers. I am turning it over to our Acting Superintendent, Mr. DeHaro, to facilitate this selection of officers.
Thank you, ma'am chair, thank you very much. I have, as mentioned, I have responsibility as Board Secretary to assist with the nomination and election of board officers. I have a script that's approximately three pages long, so please be patient. I'll read through it slowly and try not to stumble too much on my words. So, we will now move to Agenda ID 6.2, Nomination and Election of Board Officers. Education Code Section 72,000, as well as Board Policy 2210, require that the board elect its officers at its annual organizational meeting in December. The district has two board officer positions. The first is the president, and the second is vice president, both of whom take office as of January 1st, 2022. Before making nominations, there is opportunity for public comment on the election of officers. After that, trustees may ask questions or make comments. After that, there will be nominations for the office of president, followed by voting. Once a president is elected, vice president nominations and by voting will follow. State law and board policy allow any member to nominate a trustee for president with or without providing reasons for making the nomination. Any trustee may nominate oneself, and any trustee, including the student trustee, may second a nomination. When there are no more, when there are no more nominations that are seconded, there will be a motion to close nominations. Votes will be cast in the same sequence as nominated. The first nominee to receive a majority of votes will be elected to the position of president. If no person receives a majority upon the first ballot, then the person with at least votes is eliminated, and votes will be taken on the remaining nominees until one receives a majority of the votes. If there is only, if there is only one nominee, then that person is declared the president, and no vote will be taken. Once a president is elected, the same process is used to elect the vice president. Are there any questions, comments, or actions regarding the process? Then, Item 2, Public and Comment Board. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on the election of board officers? Catherine, see anyone?
No, I do not, and I do not have public comment.
Thank you. Are there any members of the board trustees who would like to offer general comments before nominations? Okay, seen, seen none. Then we move on to Section 3, Nominations for the Office of President. Nominations are excuse me? No, nominations are now open, are now open to the trustees for the office of president. Who wishes to be, who wishes to be recognized to make a nomination for the office of president?
I'd like to nominate, I'd like to nominate that Jennifer Baker remains as president through this time of transition.
Which is the second, the motion?
Second.
Do you, Trustee Baker, have any comments you would like to make regarding your nomination?
No. But no, I would, I would be happy to continue if that is the pleasure of the board.
The trustee Baker is nominated to be board president. Who, who wishes to be, who wishes to be recognized to make another nomination? Are there any further nominations?
I do. I'd like to nominate Jeff Dodd for president.
Jeff Dodd, do you have any comments? Or would you like to make, that you'd like to make regarding your nomination?
Well, I mean, I appreciate, I appreciate the nomination, trustee Rios. You know, I seconded, I seconded trustee Baker's nomination, seconded trustee Goff's motion for trustee Baker. I agree, you know, in light of the fact that there has been so much transition over the past, the past year, let alone the past month, that I personally like having trustee Baker stay in her position as it is right now, just with everything that has been going on. And I think right now, especially with a new intern coming in and a full-time president coming, you know, perhaps five, six months from now, that I think it will be nice to have some level of stability over the past year as we kind of move out and hopefully grow out of the situation that we're in right now. And so, that's, that's, that's my comment. I, I'm very humbled by the nomination, the trustee Rios.
Thank you, trustee Dodd. Any other nominations?
I would nominate Kyle Iverson, trustee Iverson for chair.
So, trustee Iverson, do you have any comments you would like to make regarding your nomination?
I, I will accept the nomination. But no, no comments. I appreciate the nomination from trustee Deluna.
So, you accepted it?
I accepted.
Thank you, okay.
Oscar, can I interrupt for a sec? I did not hear a second to the motion, Rios's motion for trustee Dodd, and I did not hear a second for trustee to this motion. So, we should probably get seconds on those.
Trustee Dodd does not want to take the chair nomination, correct?
Yeah, that, that was also not really clear. But trustee Rios made the nomination. And we needed it seconded.
I would second it.
Okay, thank you. And trustee Deluna made a nomination of Iverson. Do we have that one seconded?
Well, I will second that one.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you. So, seeing, or first of all, are there other nominations of other members of board trustees for president? Seeing no further nominations for the office of president, is there a motion to close nominations?
I will move to close the nominations.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So, nominations for president are hereby closed. So, Section 4, the election for the office of president. It is now time to vote on the candidates for the office of president. The election will be made by raising hands. A raised hand is a vote for a candidate. Candidates will be voted on in the order that they were nominated. The first candidate who receives a majority vote will be elected as president. The following members will be nominated for the office of president. So, or excuse me, so now, so now, given that it was trustee Baker who was nominated first, those who favor the, the election of trustee Baker for president of the board trustees, could you please raise your hand? Catherine, can you count for me because I can't see all?
Wait, I can't see them all either here. So, I see three hands, four hands. And I believe that is a a tie. A quorum, right? I mean, that is a Well, it's a tie. Oh, because it's four and four.
I thought the student trustee could nominate or second, but he couldn't vote. What's the process there?
I think that's correct.
Or he can't break a tie. Okay.
An trustee may nominate oneself, and any trustee, including, excluding the student trustee, may second a nomination. That's a student.
Okay, so we have three votes.
Okay. So then, yeah, so then we have then for trustee Kyle Iverson. Raise your hands.
Well, I don't, I didn't withdraw, I guess, the nomination. I didn't not take it. I just was making a comment about, yes, if I had any comments, superintendent.
All right, so then Jeff Dodd.
Point of, point of order?
Yeah.
Point of order. The nomination for trustee Dodd was not seconded. Nominations, motions?
I, I did second. Kyle Iverson seconded.
I did second trustee Dodd as
Only after, only after, there's been a mistake. Okay, so I'm just saying, when there, when there's a motion, when a motion is not seconded, it dies for lack of a second. And all I'm saying is that you guys did that kind of out of order. You were guided to do so, but that was out of order. So, I'm just saying, point of, that was, that was
That was oversight. That was oversight as a board secretary. So, so I apologize for that confusion. So, now we are, we are so we so now we're back with, with, there's three hands, is that correct? That were raised for trustee Baker for nomination for election.
That is correct.
So, now, hands raised for trustee Iverson for his candidacy.
It would be Dodd. It would be Dodd.
It would be Dodd next.
Or Dodd, excuse me.
Because I did.
Thanks, trustee Iverson.
You're welcome. So, oh, aye.
Okay, hold on, let me see. The trustee Baldini, I see you.
We vote twice? Can we? I assumed we could.
Yes.
Yeah.
Please keep your hands raised.
They're not candidates.
Over here, one, two, three, four, I see four, five hands raised. And that takes it. Okay.
So, it looks that trustee Iverson received five votes, is that correct?
Trustee Dodd.
Or Dodd. We're getting mixed up, see, so it's my fault again. So, trustee Dodd?
I think it was very confusing.
You see? So, the, the hands that we just raised were for trustee Dodd's candidacy for president.
Correct.
Okay. And so, trustee Baker received three, and trustee Dodd received five, correct?
Correct.
So, that, so that, that makes trustee Dodd the majority vote receiver who is elected board president. Is that correct?
Correct.
Correct.
So, congratulations are in order for you, trustee Dodd. And
You can have a potato.
Secretary, Mr. Secretary, Superintendent, President, Oscar DeHaro.
Yes, sir.
What I'd like to ask the board is that we vote again, all, all of us for, for trustee Jeff Dodd to show our unity and that we stand behind the incoming board president.
Is that a motion, trustee Baldini?
That's a motion.
I will accept that motion.
And second was Iverson. And please show your hands, maybe click on your, your hand. Raised hand thing would make my life easier. One, two, three, four. Now, I'm seeing six. Hang on. Seven. Am I missing anybody? Trustee Dodd, did you vote for yourself?
There's seven of us.
Okay, seven, thank you.
So, trustee Dodd is your new president of your board trustees for the 2022 year. Congratulations, trustee Dodd.
Thank you, everyone.
Now, continuing on with the nomination for the office of vice president. So, nominations are now open to the trustees for the office of vice president. Who wishes to be recognized to make a nomination for the office of vice president?
I do. I would like to nominate Kyle Iverson for vice president.
Is it, is seconded?
Second.
That was trustee Deluna. So, trustee Iverson, as a nominee for the office of vice president, do you have any comments you would like to make regarding your nomination?
I will accept the nomination and apologize for the awkwardness of it.
Me too. So, trustee Iverson is nominated to be vice president. Who wishes to be recognized to make another nomination? Excuse me, go ahead.
I move to close the nomination process.
Okay.
For the vice president.
So, seeing there's no further, and seeing there's no further nomination of vice president, is there a motion to close the nominations, which were just made? And who And who's seconded?
Second.
I second. Oh, awesome. Or what?
We're good.
Nominations are closed. So the board, so now, the board will proceed to vote on the candidates for the office of vice president. We have one. So if you want in unison, as you did for the president role for trustee Dodd, if you could all raise your hands in a vote of unison, if you'd like. Your support. Great.
Thank you, I see that.
So trustee, trustee Kyle Iverson, you are the vice president of your board trustees for the 2022 year.
Thank you, you guys.
And so with that, I think that includes my, my role and want to thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Okay then, let's see. So we are moving on now to board policies, review and adoption. Seventeen point one, update on policies and procedures related to budget, planning and fiscal matters. I asked Catherine Kittle to bring this forward so we could review it in light of all of the things that are going on with FICMAT, et cetera, with ACCJC. And I understand that, uh, acting president Taharo has already made some movement on this and is working on it, but would still like to review what else is outstanding in this area.
Okay, so since we have some new faces, I thought I might remind you that the board of trustees did direct staff to use the CCLC policy service templates and, uh, as we work to complete the board policy manual. As executive coordinator to the superintendent president, I do manage the board, board policy manual and I coordinate the document reading process that is outlined in AP 2410 on policies and procedures. My qualifications, I have a master's degree in international policy analysis. I worked on arms control policy at Stanford University. Then I moved on to University of Washington in Seattle and worked there on all things European Union. I also worked for a brief stint as a legislative analyst in the legal department of a major vehicle manufacturer, big trucks. I've been in this position for four years and I receive training twice a year from the CCLC and that is offered by the LCW attorney, Eileen O'Hara Anderson and the CCLC policy analyst. I only go once a year when it's in person, but twice a year when it's online. So here's the document I prepared for you. These are, so D1150 was repealed by the board at the January 14th board meeting in 2014. At the same meeting, they adopted this group of board policies which were intended to replace it. And then the work began on the APs that were intended to complement those or implement those board policies. So AP 3250 institutional planning, there is a draft document, is going to be reviewed and revised by the planning and budget committee this spring. 6200 also is going to be reviewed and revised by the planning and budget committee. And, and today we find there's going to be a task force to help work on that and move it through. These other two documents were approved at, in mutual agreement, no, no, I'm sorry, not by mutual agreement. They just went through the process and came out the other side and were approved in October 2015.
So Catherine, I think that you should say spring 2022.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I'm off by my COVID time, COVID calendar. Sorry, I'll correct that and repost. Uh, here we have, this is chapter six, business and fiscal affairs of the NDC board policy manual. I put a key up here for you. So if there's an X in this column, that means we have an adopted approved document and it is posted through the public manual. If there's an LR by it over, over here where we need to do work, that means it is a legally required document and that is indicated by the CCLC policy service. Either the document is required by law and/or the language is required by law. And then the ACCR, you will see to the right of some of them, that just means that they're accreditation related. And so you'll see down here that I think most or all of the BP's are in place. I provided the date when they were adopted or last revised. There are a couple that are older that probably should be looked at. You'll see there's a 2015. Nothing is terribly old at this time. If you look at the right-hand column, you'll see that there are quite a few APs. This, this, this chapter needs work. And I know that Doug Roberts probably doesn't have the time to work these. I have given him a few and invited him to take a look at them. And I would imagine that the legally required would be our priority project. So if, if he's able to, and if not, then I will take it up with his successor and get these started. I see there's a hand raised. And that's basically all I have to, to present to you tonight. That's the end of my report.
Rafael, did you have a question? You're muted.
Sorry, that was left up from the voting.
Oh, okay. And now, did you have a question?
Yeah, is this, does this list include what was mentioned by Dr. Tahara of what hasn't been pushed through?
It's several, but not all, but I think there may be more. It is mostly to do with the APs, as I understand.
Sounds like it. I'm just wondering when that's going to come before us or what's
Although, well, the, the board doesn't actually approve APs. I, and I mostly just wanted to bring this up just to kind of get a clear idea of what work needed to be done and to kind of sunshine it a little bit, because I know that there is a quite, there are quite a few things that need to be done, both for legal requirements, also for accreditation and
And I think, I, I think my question, to be more clear, is more of along the lines of why those are stuck there. And, and again, because they do, we do need some of them in place for accreditation. We need to get that going. So I'm not sure why it's been on hold for so long.
Well, I think at this point, we, we, it is, Mr. Taharo is definitely moving forward on at least a couple of them and the rest of them will require some attention as we move forward with Mr. Roger, with our VP of Finance and then whoever our next, our next VP of Finance is going to be. So we got a little bit of work that will be done in interim here, but a lot of it, I think, is going to fall to our interim and also the new VP of Finance. But hopefully we can get some of Doug's wisdom downloaded before he leaves.
Sorry to put the spotlight on you, Doug, if you're still there.
Yeah, no, I, I prefer the reference to Mr. Rogers. It's a beautiful day in the neighborhood. I'm ready to go off to the magic kingdom.
Me too. So did that answer your question, trustee Deluna?
Sure.
Okay, yeah, so we, we mostly just wanted to bring it up, be aware, acknowledge that we are aware that this is work that needs to be done. Even though the board does not take action on these, we are going to be following the process as closely as, as is appropriate and make certain that these things get taken care of for both our legal requirements as well as for accreditation. And of course, we also have new deadlines from FICMAT that we have to take care of.
And you do have a right to see these. I'm, I'm happy to bring the group of these documents to you once they're uh, we should be bringing you the APs. Once they're complete, we, we'd be happy to bring you
And it's just for information.
For review, yeah, not approval.
Correct.
Yeah, I would like that. Thank you.
So now we have a second reading on board policy 2310 on decorum. I'm sorry, I don't know why I'm thinking that's funny. Maybe it's because I've been eating while we're meeting. So do we have, this second reading, we shouldn't have any changes? Do we have a motion to adopt?
Move to adopt.
I'll second. Alrighty then, any public comment? Any discussion?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I don't see any. And who was the second?
Uh, Rios, or was it, oh yeah, Goff.
Rios was one and Goff was second.
Oh, and I see Dr. Tahara has her hands raised.
Um, just as a refresher, and since we're following, we're supposed to be following AP 2410. Was, did this come, did this, because we haven't met in terms of council of presidents, did this BP 2310 come through council of presidents? Does anybody know?
No, chapter two, the way the board runs its board meetings does not go out for constituent group review.
Okay, so
But I don't remember if that's, that's been our practice. I don't remember if it's in the AP.
Right, because we don't have access to the, to the AP, I'd request that we review this. Because even though it becomes part, even though it is about board meetings and how the board conducts their meeting, at the moment, we're having an issue around transparency. And I just think it would be a good idea that at least the constituent leaders be, at least take a, take a look at it.
This is the second read though, right?
No, I did Second.
This is the second reading and the constituent group leaders are present at these meetings when these
But we don't get to rev, but we don't get to review, Catherine. So I think, that's, that's okay. I'll bring it up council, when our next council of presidents.
I'll make a note. Research in AP 3410, it's, it's the way I was instructed, but I will check the document to see what it says on this.
And I just want to, I just want to clarify, since in the agenda, it's got, subject is 2310 and that's what's in the description, but in the recommended action, it says 2355. So I just want to
Oh, you're right. Thank you.
Yeah, so that's where I get mixed up on decorum.
Yeah, you're right. Sorry about that.
So
Change that motion to
But the motion was for 2310, I believe.
Yes.
Yes, okay. So then, so we have a motion on the floor. Trustee Dodd, your vote.
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
Aye.
Trustee Baldini?
Aye.
Trustee Deluna?
Aye.
Student trustee Rios? Oh wait, wait, sorry. Going back to school, Rafael. Trustee Rios? Student trustee Soto Gonzalez?
Aye.
Oh, goodness gracious. And I also vote in the affirmative. So we have an adopted board policy. Now we have first reading on board policy 4300. And this is covering field trips. We have a revision proposed by the academic senate. See if we open that.
I'm sorry. So we have a current document, what, what you see in strike through black, that's being removed from current document. This is being added. And let me see, what do we have? So this language is also being removed from the current document and this is being added.
Any questions?
I have a question. About field trips. Is this solely limited to student field trips? Because I'm, I'm just thinking about the board's field trip to Mount Vitor. And, and so, or any sort of, let's say, if there's a administrative, professional development level type of field trip. And so just want to get clarification because I'm not sure if this would totally be appropriate if it did apply to those, to those types of field trips outside of a student, student learning field, field trips.
No, actually, first two for student traveling in this
It's not entirely, if you look at some of the, I, I just, if that, if that's, if that is absolutely the case, then that's, that's the intent. I see that first it's student, but then if you go into, in terms of the crossed out, outside of anything for paying expenses, I don't believe in that preamble that there is anything mentioned about students specifically. So I, I just wanted to clarify. It's, it's just a question only.
And I'll say, yeah, I think also the question was to confirm that it was specifically to do with classroom and not like, say, for instance, if the student association was sending a group to Washington or something like that, if that would be considered a field trip? I don't know. Do we have an answer on that question?
Uh, hold on, I see there are some hands raised.
Dr. Tahara's hands up?
Yeah.
Dr. Tahara?
Oh, sorry.
That's right.
Yes, this has to do with students.
Students, yes, but does it have to do with class, specifically just and exclusively with classroom related?
It includes those that are class assignments. And I would, I'm, if you can scroll down, Catherine, please.
I don't want to jump in before you're, you're finished, but the, the AP does go into quite a bit more detail and covers all student trips in both academic affairs and for student services type of trips.
Yes, that's, that's where I was headed. You're right, this is the policy. So the policy is going to be broad, broader in scope in terms of the language. The details of how the policy gets executed is in the AP, which will come before you later.
And I can add one more thing.
Just as an information item, because the board does not approve, does not approve APs.
And in response to trustee Dodd's question, the AP also does clarify that the district shall engage instructors, supervisors and other personnel as may be necessary for field trips or excursions who desire to contribute their services. So it, I do believe the AP would allow for the type of trip that you described for the board of trustees going to Mount Vitor.
I mean, I think that that's just helpful. I think it's just a little, just a little ambiguous and perhaps could be clearer, but that's, that's my comment.
So at this point, are we going to, are we proposing change or requesting change? Or are we saying at this point, we're just, we've clarified and we're good?
If, you know, if any trustees have any comments that feel it's ambiguous, if no one else, then I'm the one and then I'm happy to be supportive of just moving forward.
It's, it's just a little difficult with all the cross out and stuff to kind of
Right.
So you're reading, literally reading between the lines. All right then. So thank you very much. We can go ahead and close that. And then, let's see, now we are on to board reports. So standing committee and other appointment reports. Did DOS, did, let's see, trustee Iverson, did DOS meet?
We did not meet.
Did not meet. Pediculture and Winery Foundation Board, Mr. Baldini, did you meet?
Yes, we met last, last evening and uh, thank you, board, for approving the manager of winery operations for the Pediculture Winery Technology Program going forward. A adds a firm hand on all those non-academic issues that had come with running a winery and given a new construction coming along and that event space and so on and so forth. It's, it's a critical position. So thank you very much. And we also added as a director, Doug Schaefer, who is president of Schaefer Winery. So his, uh, contributions, uh, will add immeasurably to the, to the program. And his, his, uh, um, goal, his, his long-term commitment is to produce world-class wines from estate vineyards, and that aligns perfectly with, uh, with our mission and, and, uh, with the students, giving them an opportunity to, to succeed in this process. So that was it. Then our next meeting will be on the 20th, excuse me, the second day of February. So I also, um...
Groundhog Day.
So thank you very much. Groundhog Day is correct.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Tahada, you have your hand up, or just was that a, a carryover?
Sorry, that looks like it's residual, sorry.
I figured, just wanted to double check. All right then, Legislative Affairs, uh, Trustee Goff.
We did not meet, but our own Holly Dawson is off to the legislative conference, the CCLC Legislative Conference, to kick off the legislative year. So I am sure she will come back with work for us to do in January. So be ready for that.
And Audit and Finance Committee has not met. Um, but we are still anticipating a special meeting, sometime in the next couple of weeks, I believe, to adopt the audit?
That's if they get it done.
Okay. Do you know when that might, when we will know if it's done?
Uh, we, we, we pester them about every other day.
Okay.
Um, they're, they're, uh, we, we still need to supply them with some of the information they need. Um, I'm hoping they'll get it done soon.
Well, just keep, keep us in the loop, and we will, uh, pull together, at least four of us to make that happen if we get the opportunity. Michael, did you have your hand up? Nope.
Yes, I did. It was actually, uh, in relation to Trustee Goff's report on the Legislative Affairs Committee. We actually had an item come up, or frustration at the Vediculture and Winery, uh, Technology Meeting, or the Foundation Meeting, in that, in the course of replanting a portion of the vineyard, the requirement of three bids. And it just seems like an opportunity to push some legislation for the career technical education, uh, programs throughout the California, that in some instances, there's only one company out there that will provide the goods and services that are necessary to complete a particular project. I know there's a little, there's some wording out there that does presently exist. Perhaps, uh, Doug Roberts could, could correct me on it. Uh, but it just seems to be a little bit, uh, something that needs to be codified a little bit more or made clear. Thank you.
Oh, I'll certainly look into it. I wasn't aware of the situation, but, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll find out more and see what I can do.
Thank you.
Real Property has not met. McPherson is on hiatus. Dr. Schenk is on hiatus. Napa Valley College Foundation Board of Directors. Uh, Kyle, do you have anything to add?
Other than the fact that we had the Foundation Holiday Party the other night, and thank you for those of you that made it. I'm sorry that Trustee Goff was not feeling well, but I'm glad to see you here tonight. So thank you. A lot of good stuff going on, so looking forward to that, the future with the Foundation.
We enjoyed watching your little kiddos bounce around. They were very cute. All right. Uh, Accreditation Steering Committee, uh, Trustee Deluna, anything?
Um, we've already heard a lot about accreditation. We have been meeting, and I think we're going to continue to meet, so more to come.
More to come. Fantastic, thank you. All right then, future agenda items. Do we have anything, uh, that we would like to add to our list? Or do we want to take a look at our list to see where we are? Uh, we still need to, you know what? We need to bring back next month, I would, I would suggest, our, the goals. Because we have, we, um, haven't yet, um, addressed those. It adopted new goals for the board. So I would suggest that we add that on here formally, so we don't lose it.
And also, um, I was hoping we could talk about the professional development soon. I know it's on there, but, um, there are, uh, conferences that I would like to attend for new trustees that I wasn't able to attend last year, um, or at least look at, so for consideration.
We do have the CCLC, uh, Trustee Workshop coming. I think it's January 28th and 29th. It's in Sacramento.
It's going to be live in person?
Uh, it looks like it's in person.
Yeah, it's going to be live.
Person. Okay.
Yeah, in person.
That can be interesting. All right then. Um, if no one else has anything else, we'll move on to trustee and board chair reports. Trustee Dodd, do you have a report?
You know, I think so many people deserve over this past month. Bob Harris really spoke to it pretty, pretty darned well about how crazy it's been over this past month. And there's a, there's a good, long list of names that, um, that I, I can go over, but I think everyone knows who they are. I, I do, though, want to mention one name in particular is Oscar De Haro, who has just really stepped up to the plate in a really, um, tough situation and, and done so with really incredible, um, amount of grace and, um, communication and compassion and, um, really just generosity with his time, with everything that he's going on, his existing hat that he wears right now. So I, I just want to, um, take time and, and say thank you, Oscar. Um, I know I speak for, on behalf of everybody, 100%. Uh, we're, we're all behind you. We really appreciate everything that you've done over the past few weeks. It's been tremendous.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. And Trustee Goff, do you have a report?
Uh, yes, I am feeling better. I'm glad you missed me, uh, Trustee Iverson. Thank you so much. Um, I wanted to, uh, give my kudos to Oscar as well. I, I really feel good, uh, uh, and, and feeling like things are going to be fine because you're at the helm, and I appreciate it. I also want to thank you, uh, Trustee Baker, for, um, leading the charge over the last couple of months. I know how much time and effort you put in, and I truly appreciate all the work that you've done. Um, I just want to wish everybody a very happy holiday. And I know myself, I need a really good rest, and I know all of us do. And I hope we're able to hunker down, uh, in the holidays and just get some rest and recoup. So when January gets here, we're off and running again. So I wish you all the best. Thank you again.
Thank you. Trustee Iverson?
I, I think, uh, Trustee Dodd and Trustee Goff had really spoken really well and hit it on the head. I think, Oscar, I truly appreciate everything that you've done. And Trustee Baker, I think you've done a great job, too. And I, everybody at the campus as a whole, the district, uh, we will get through all this. So that's, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Baldini?
No, uh, report other than what is so eloquently said by, by, Trustee Dodd and Trustee Goff. Uh, Oscar, my, um, hats off to you again, uh, you know, over the years, as long as I've served the college on, as a trustee and, and also a student. You're, you're just a class act. And, and thank you very, very much from the bottom of my heart for, for stepping up and, and serving your students. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Trustee Deluna?
Uh, I just also wanted to say thank you, um, President Battle. I really appreciate you stepping up and all the work you've done. And thank you to your family for, um, sharing you with us even more, I think, now that you're doing two jobs. Um, and then also all your staff that has really stepped up and, and, um, helped get everything going, too. I know everybody's working extra hard right now, and, um, there's a lot of work to come. So I, I do wish everybody happy holidays and, um, you know, Feliz Ano Nuevo, and hopefully, and I know that next year will be better. So, um, we are going to get through this, um, together. Thank you, everybody.
And Trustee Rios?
I just, uh, would echo what everybody has said and thank everybody, um, for their leadership, especially obviously Oscar, uh, with all the work he's done. Um, Trustee Baker, um, you, you, you took on a year. I'm sure you didn't know what was coming, but, uh, I want to say that you, you handled it very well, did a good job, and I appreciate all the work that everybody has, has done this past year and the commitment that everybody has shown in this situation. So thank you very much. I hope you have a wonderful holiday, and everyone stay safe.
Thank you. And student trustee Soto Gonzalez?
Uh, yeah, I also just wanted to say thanks to Oscar De Haro, or President De Haro, for, you know, stepping up to the position. And also thank you, Baker, for being the, what's called chair trustee? But yeah, during my few months of being here as trustee. And, um, what else? Nothing really else, just been busy with finals, you know? Pushing through for the last week now. Oh, wow. Uh, getting the maker space up and ready for next semester for student use. So that's exciting. And yeah, um, hope everyone have a great holiday, you know, and sleep in as well deserved. And yeah, I'll see you guys in the new year.
Thank you. Uh, goodness, uh, report, report, report. Um, was, as, as Trustee Rios just noted, yeah, when, when we started out, 2021, who knew what was coming? And it's definitely been an interesting ride. I, um, I feel like it really rubber hit the road, uh, in the summertime. And then, my goodness, the last, uh, few weeks have been the whirlwind that was described by, um, our, by Bob Harris. And I have lost count of how many meetings I've gone to, how many phone calls I've made, um, but, uh, and have received. And I did get to go to, uh, in-person graduation, which was lovely. It was really, really nice to be able to do that and celebrate again with families and students and, uh, really to acknowledge their achievements. And then, of course, the, uh, Foundation, uh, event the other night, too, is just lovely to be able to see people in person, including some I haven't seen hardly ever in person until just now. So, um, do, uh, I, it's been a good year. I, uh, wish our new, uh, board chair and vice chair the absolute best. Have fun with it. I am looking forward to tearing up my cheat sheets. And, uh, also, I just want to say very quickly that, uh, I, one of the things I really was focusing on the last, uh, several months was really working on these, uh, relationships with the constituent groups. And I, uh, hope that that work will continue. I think it's very important, and we've made a lot of progress. And I, uh, will hope that we continue along those same, same roads. So thank you very much, and everyone has a wonderful holiday. Uh, and eat your black IP's on January 1st. We're going to need them.
Um, Chairman, may I, uh, may I just a couple of words, please?
Absolutely, sir.
I, I just wanted to, uh, to actually say that, that is my appreciation of you as a board, uh, as a board chairperson, as well as the, the whole group of, uh, board members that, that you lead. It's my appreciation of you for the vote of confidence that you, that you gave me. Uh, it's, it's, it's an experience that, that although short, but very, very rich, and it's one in a lifetime. So I want to thank you, the board trustees, the members, for having offered me this opportunity. And I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the rest of the campus, all the staff members that have assisted, the Academic Senate, the Classified Senate, the Student Senate, the Administrative Senate, all those who have been supportive of the efforts that I've, that I've given to date. Now granted, there's still a couple of weeks left, uh, so things may change. But, but so far, so good. So I want to thank you, and by my heart, for, for having, uh, given me this, this guidance and, and support, and also especially the cabinet. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All righty then. So with no further items, and we do not need to move into closed session again. So we can adjourn our meeting at 9:08 PM. Our next meeting will be, well, our next regular meeting will be January 18th. And we might have a meeting sometime between now and the end of the year for the audit. So stay tuned. Don't go anywhere. Have a great holiday, everyone.